Rick? Okay, so we're live, okay. Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Montclair Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. Notice of this meeting was published in the Montclair Times and the Star-Letter at the beginning of the year. And notice of this particular meeting was posted on the township's bulletin board inside the building, the two bulletin boards outside of the building, the municipal building at 205 Claremont Avenue, as well as on the township's website. This meeting is being conducted as a remote meeting using the Cisco WebEx platform. Anybody interested in participating in the meeting can click on the link that's on the posted agenda to participate via computer, or you can participate via telephone by calling 1-408-418-9388 and entering the access code which is shown on the agenda, which is 179-247-3657. If not, you can also watch the meeting on TV 34 or through Montclair, the Montclair Government YouTube channel. The first item on our agenda is the roll call. Let me get there. Mr. Allen? Mr. Church?
Here.
Mr. Fleischer?
Here.
Mr. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Simon is excused. Mr. Harrison?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Caulfield? Oh, I see he's here, okay. We just have to unmute him. Mr. Caulfield, if you could turn on your microphone. I see that you are an attendee. Ah. Mr. Caulfield?
There he is.
Okay, just say here. And Mr. Viera?
Here.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, we have the minutes of the September 22 meeting. I have several changes on page two and three and four. The header on the page refers to the August meeting rather than the September meeting.
Okay.
And on line, I'm still on page two, on line 10, it should be reconfigured.
Yep.
And then on line, figure out where I'm trying, line 36. It's not to open vehicle doors, it's to provide the required vehicle overhang. It's needed to provide the required vehicle overhang.
Okay.
And then on line 38 at the end, instead of thin out, put impact the parking spaces adjacent to that property line.
Okay.
And on page three, line 12, the sentence that starts another board member after member, but questioned the number of windows being
Wait, what, you're on page three, what, what number?
Line 12.
Okay.
Where it says another board member and then instead of what follows that, but questioned the number of windows being, and then continuing with provided on the south side of the garage.
Okay.
And on, at the end of line 24, instead of saying to represent him, say authorize Ms. Rombo to present the application on his behalf.
Okay.
And then line 35, to approve the application as amended, because we did put on the condition about the location of the condensers.
Okay.
And then page four, the first line again, add as amended. Does anyone else have any changes?
Move approval of the application.
The minute.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yes. So I, I'm reading through a couple of things that maybe they're more stylistic, but I think for the purposes of consistency. Within the section or application 2742, I noticed that in some places when taking reference to percentages, we're spelling up a word and other cases we're using the percentage mark. But I think we should be consistent. And I also noticed that in most cases we were referencing that the board expressed concern or questioned or whatever. But then in other places, we then suddenly reverted to another board member or we reverted to the pronoun he. Again, I think if we're gonna, if we're going to say that, you know, the minutes reflect that the board has questioned or expressed concern or taken action and that should be the consistent language. And we should avoid making references to individual board members. And then I think you might have caught this, but I'm not sure, but also similarly on line 43, where it says we changed the number of dwellings, was we reduced from 10 to nine. Again, we used a numerical 10, but then it's spelled off as one nine. So it's just a matter of consistency in terms of that.
Does anyone else have any changes to the minutes?
Move approval of the minutes as, as corrected.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Then we have the resolution for the hacking application on Warfield Street. I have a couple of changes to that. In number three of the findings, it should be 60 feet of frontage on Warfield Street. The 50.44 was the direction bearing. And then now therefore be it resolved, at the end it should be, is approved subject to the following condition. And the condition should read, "The condensers shall be located on the south side of the house."
Okay.
Of any changes to the resolution?
Move approval of the resolution as corrected.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Janice, you want to announce the postponements before we proceed?
Certainly. Application 2655, which is 369 373 Bloomfield Avenue, Light Shade Labs, has requested that the matter be postponed to the December 15th Board of Adjustment meeting. Likewise, application 2739, 21 Van Leek Street for the Montclair Foundation, has requested that the matter be postponed to the November 17th Board of Adjustment meeting. Neither application will be heard this evening.
So if there's anyone here for either of those two applications, they will not, one, not be heard tonight and they'll be heard on the dates as indicated. You know, there will not be any further notice of those applications, so mark your calendars, your devices, whatever, so you are here for November 4. Now I got it confused. Which application was November?
As Montclair Foundation is November 17.
And Montclair Foundation on November 17th and then the Light Trade application on, in the other December meeting.
Okay.
Okay, the first application is the continuation of the public hearing. For the application by 63 Park Street, Montclair LLC for property at 63 Park Street. Is John Best, are you ready to proceed?
Ms. John Best, I made you a panelist, so you should be able to participate. I thought I did. Yeah. Ms. John Best, if you can turn your microphone on, you should be able to participate.
Got it, okay. Hello. Lisa John-Bassa, present. Can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay. For the record, Lisa John-Bassa with love from Kieza Shaheenian and Jant Nasi on behalf of the Appcan. This is the Appcan's third appearance before the board in connection with its development for mixed-use residential office development on its property. The last time we were before the board, the board raised several comments related to potential obstructions within the parking area, landscaping choices, as well as the feasibility of maintaining a separation in the proposed office space, which was a former garage to the main building. We were able to address the first two comments of the board and have submitted a revised landscaping plan to address those with respect to the last comment on the separation for the reasons that will be addressed by our professionals. It's our client's very strong preference that the, that the connection be maintained, both from a design and from a marketing standpoint to office tenants. But we will go into that in further detail. To discuss the application this evening, we have three witnesses. Paul Sionis to go over the site and landscaping changes. Ryan Robertson to discuss the reason why the applicant would like to maintain the connection. And lastly, Justin Orsilio, who is our professional planner, to testify to the planning proofs for the variance relief requested.
Hey, you want to call Mr. Sionis?
Please, please. Paul, are you present?
Yeah, Paul, you're a panelist and Ryan, you're a panelist. You just need to turn on your microphone. And Mr. Ossielo, yes, I made you a panelist as well.
Thank you.
Oh, I see you've got your video working, we just don't have your audio. There. Okay. Now, Paul, you need to unmute yourself.
I think I'm good, right?
You are good, Paul. Just, just for the record, you were previously sworn you're still under oath.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Paul, in advance of tonight's meeting, I believe you submitted exhibit to Ms. Tally.
Yes, I did.
The next exhibit, I believe, is exhibit A3, if we want to mark it as PowerPoint presentation with today's date.
Well, the PowerPoint, yes, it's, the file has October 20. Oh, I just deleted it, sorry.
Sorry.
Oops, let me pull it up again. PowerPoint presentation is this, okay. Okay, it has the date of October 7.
Correct. The date it was submitted.
But the exhibit itself says revised October 7, 2021.
Correct.
All right, so that's the day we're going with as far as the exhibit. Right, that's A3.
Got it. Okay, Paul, if you could run through the site and landscaping changes that have been made since our last appearance?
Sure. Janice, can we go to the second slide, please?
And, and just so I understand, Mr. Sionis, are these changes incorporated solely within this exhibit A3 or were they also submitted as separate plans?
No, this is, the landscape plan was submitted separately. And then the PowerPoint incorporates that landscape plan, but with additional photographs and the landscape plan prepared in color for better visibility.
Proceed.
Okay, thank you. Slide number two, this is a colored version of the landscape plan that was submitted on October 7. And based on the, the board questions and comments at the last meeting, revisions were made to the landscape plan to address those comments. Slide number three, please, Janice.
Okay.
Okay. So several revisions were made to the landscape plan based on the comments. And I've highlighted those in, in six different colors. First item number one is there were discussion about the potential overhang of vehicles in spaces 11 through 19, which is the north side of the parking area that's closest to the Shamari Unit property. And there was, there were previously evergreen shrubs shown along the north side of those stalls between the curb and the property line, since the township requires either evergreen planting or a solid fence. So those shrubs have been eliminated from in front of parking stalls 11 through 19. And they've been replaced with a six-inch depth decorative stone mulch entirely in front of stalls 11 through 19 between the curb and the property line. And, and I'll go through this in more detail the next few slides. Item number two is that there was question about potential conflict with opening car doors. In particular, parking stall 19, which is the stall closest to Park Street, and stall number 11, which is the stall closest to the Montclair Municipal Parking Lot on the northeast corner. So those, the planting immediately to the west of stall 19 and immediately to the east of stall 11 was removed. And also it's called to be replaced with the six-inch depth stone mulch, the decorative stone mulch, to be installed over continuous filter fabric. Item number three, this is directly to the rear of the main building and at the bottom left of the parking area. Item number three, there was a discussion about eliminating any parking conflicts or potential conflicts with car doors opening over planting. And that's at parking stall number one, which is the top left of the rear parking area and parking stall number four, also parking stall number five in the bottom left. So the planting was removed next to where the car doors would be in those three parking stalls. And the permeable paving was substituted for the planting that was previously shown. So instead of planting next to those parking stalls, the permeable pavers that are shown for all the walkways on this property will be continued right up to the sides of those three parking stalls. Item number four, that's shown with the yellow number. Since the evergreen shrubs were removed, we now have to install a fence along that northerly property line. So they're proposing a new four-foot high, solid board, vertical, board-on-board, not board-on-board, but board, a budding board fence that will now be on that northerly property line that'll screen the view of the parking area from the adjoining property. So because the evergreen shrubs removed, because of the potential conflict with cars overhanging on the front of those parking stalls, we now have a fence on the property line. Number five, there was number five, since we removed those evergreen shrubs on the north side of those parking stalls, I thought it seemed pretty bare, so we were calling for four new slender silhouette sweetgum trees to be installed directly online with the stripes, the parking stall stripes between stalls 17 and 18, stalls 15 and 16, stalls 13 and 14, and 11 and 12 to help buffer the view of the upper portion of the Shamari Unit's south wall. So those would be directly online with the stripes, so cars will not hit those. And those are very slender, five to six-foot diameter deciduous trees that grow very tall. And then item number six. Item number six, there was a lot of discussion, I was not at the last meeting, but I watched the tape. There continued to be discussion about the evergreen trees on the easterly property line. We had previously called for Brody Eastern Red Cedars, which to my knowledge was the narrowest evergreen native tree that was suitable to place along parking lots. Since that last meeting, we found an alternative tree, which I'll explain, which is actually a much narrower tree that typically is three feet in diameter, but it's also evergreen. Next slide, please. Slide number four. So this is an enlargement of that northern side of the parking lot. So as I said, we've removed the evergreen shrubs from the north side of stalls 11 through 19. Replaced it with this matte black decorative stone mulch in the area between the curbing and the fence. And that would be placed on a continuous filter fabric so that the water drains through. It will also be placed on the west side or the Park Street side of stall number 19 and on the east side of stall number 11. And this was, I think there was part of a discussion. Automobiles are tending to increase in size. They're for example, the, the new electric Ford pickup truck that's, that'll be sold this year or the beginning of next year will actually be larger than 19 feet. So it's anticipated that, that if that car parked in many parking lots, it would overhang over curbs. So therefore, we've eliminated the evergreen shrubs. Still, slide number five, please. Slide number five, this is an enlargement also of that north side. And this is to show an example of the, the solid wood fence that would be installed right along the northern property line. So it would be a simple vertical board, a budding board wood fence, four foot in height. And it would be installed all the way from the northeast corner of the property, closest to the Montclair Municipal Parking Lot, up to the north, up to the front corner of the main building. So it would stop online with the front corner of the main building. And this fence was selected because it's, it's solid. It's board, budding board, it's not board-on-board. And the posts were allowed to be stepped as it goes up the slope of this property. Next slide, please. Slide number six. So there was, there was a lot of discussion about landscaping choices. And the top left is the Brody Eastern Red Cedar that was originally specified. It can be maintained at four feet in diameter, 12 to 15 feet in height. There were questions about, you know, pruning the shrub with this small tree, which, which can be done. However, since then, I've been introduced to the, the tree directly to the right in this exhibit, which is the Taylor Eastern Red Cedar. And it's a narrower alternative to the Brody Cedar. It's also a native to northern New Jersey, but it, it, the maximum diameter that I've been told was four feet in diameter, but it's typically, the largest is three feet in diameter and can easily be maintained at 20 feet in height. So we think this is a excellent substitute for the evergreen trees along that easterly property line. And it would eliminate maintenance in the future. I mean, all, all shrubs and trees need maintenance, but this would eliminate the maintenance or the possibility of those trees overhanging those parking stalls. Top right is the Shamrock Ink Berry. Question was asked what the shrub looks like last time. So this, this slide is just some of the evergreens that are used in the proposal. Shamrock Ink Berry, it's native to northern New Jersey. It's three to four foot high, it gets maintained two to three feet in diameter. So this, this is for lower screening. Bottom left is the American Holly. This is used screening on the, the south side of the property. This is native to New Jersey. Can do well in sun or shade. It gets, you know, 10 feet in diameter, but can grow 15 to 30 feet tall after 20 or 25 years. And then interesting one, the bottom center is the Bearberry. Bearberry is an evergreen ground cover that is very tolerant of salt and pollution. So it's a great plant, plant around a parking lot that, that might get road salt or be salted after heavy snow. So that, that's a sort of a selection of the evergreens that were selected. Next slide, please. Slide number seven is some of the deciduous trees that were selected. And since there are questions on this, and we don't usually show photographs of what's been selected, I thought this would be helpful. The top left is the American Yellowwood Tree. That, that's the tree that's proposed for within the rear parking area. Three of these, four of these trees, three of these trees are proposed for the rear parking area. The beautiful thing about this tree is it gets these long white flowers in May. It's a, it's a considered small shade tree and it only grows 30 to 50 feet tall. The top right is an Eastern Redbud that's shown on the site plan in the front of the property. Pink flowers in the month of April. It grows 20 to 30 feet tall maximum, attracts birds and butterflies. Bottom left is the slender silhouette sweetgum. I mentioned this the first meeting. This is the tree that lines the lawn at the rear of the Van Leek property in Montclair. And the beauty of this tree is it can grow 30 to 50 feet tall, but maximum of six feet in diameter. And it has the, the orange-red fall color. And this is the tree that I indicated would be placed, four of these would be placed on the north side of stalls 11 through 19, online with the parking lot striping, parking stall striping. So cars would not hit that. But it would form a buffer up against the Shamari Unit's southerly wall. Middle picture is the Downy Service Berry. This is shown on our proposed landscape plan. It's a small multi-stem tree. The, the benefit of this tree, it has white flowers, early white flowers in March and April, gets berries that look like blueberries the month of June, and then it has really good fall color, yellow to orange. And then the bottom right is, is the major shade tree that was, is proposed for this project. It's the Willow Oak Tree. It's a, as it says, low-maintenance, long-lived oak tree that has willow-like leaves, grows 40 to 75 feet tall. There used to be several of these in front of the Montclair Public Library on South Fullerton. Next slide, please. And this is just the, I believe, the last picture with planting, plant materials. These are the deciduous shrubs, prennes and ground covers that were selected. Top left is Summer Sweet. We're showing these on the site plan. The purpose of many of these selections to spread, is to spread out the time of flowering and the time of interest. So this has pink flowers in July and August, sends up these spikes of flowers. Middle to the top is the Wild Geranium. There's quite a few of these shown on our site plan. They're, they're low, very low ground cover. They get to a maximum of one and a half feet tall, do well in sun or shade. And we have quite a few of these shown because they, they spread nicely in areas. Top right is a Swamp Azalea. It's deciduous, deciduous azalea, flowers in May and June, gets three to five feet tall. Bottom left is the Pennsylvania Sedge. The first meeting we had on this project, there was a question about what the letter CP was. This is the plant that's proposed for the south side of the existing garage building. The garage building sort of sinks into the, into the hill on the south side of the property. And the windows are low to the ground. So we're proposing this Pennsylvania Sedge to be planted between that So we're proposing this Pens- uh, Pennsylvania Sedge to be planted between that existing garage building and the southerly property line. It's only six inches to twelve inches high, does well in shade, um, or full shade, which is the situation on the south side of the garage. And it's slightly, um, evergreen, so it's deciduous to semi-evergreen. Um, and it, it sort of spreads and toughs as it's shown, uh, on the photograph. Uh, middle bottom photograph is the Black Ho- Black Hoa Vibranum. Uh, it's a large shrub that can grow up to twelve, uh, twelve to fifteen feet tall. I've, I've mostly seen them like eight to ten feet. Um, the beauty of this one is that it has flat top white flowers in the months of May and June, and then black fruits in the fall, and then the, the leaves turn, uh, pinkish-red. Uh, we're showing these around the, um, the, the southwest side of the, the building. And then, um, bottom right is Cardinal Flower. Uh, we're showing these on the front of the building, we're showing both these and Red, uh, Mobilia. Um, s- uh, so these bloom in the late summer, they grow to three feet tall, they require full sun, um, and, and they spread nicely. So we're proposing quite a few of those, um, along the walkway in the front of the building. Uh, next slide, please. Next slide is, is just the landscape plan. Uh, again, the first meeting we had, um, on this project, uh, the landscape plan was not legible because the lettering was so small on the PowerPoint. So this is just the enlargement of the, of the plant scheduler, or, uh, just so you could read it, read the lettering on this. Um, everything that I described is, is on this plant schedule. There, there are more items on this plant schedule and on the plan than what I just showed in those two slides, uh, the three slides, but the slides were a good selection of the planting that's been selected for this property. Uh, next slide, please. Um, the, the next few slides will be covered by Ryan Robertson of, of, of our office. But, uh, before I, I turn it over to Ryan, Lisa, maybe I'll have to address the, um, uh, the dumpster in the rear of the property. Okay, um, Janice, can we turn back to, um, slide number three? Um, I would, again, I was not at the last meeting, but I, I, I watched the tape. Um, there was discussion about the conflict of car doors opening over plant material. Uh, and I believe we've addressed that, it was brought to my attention today that, um, there could be a, a conflict with the trash and recycling location in the rear, uh, northeast corner of the property. The, uh, as you could see, uh, to the bottom edge of the parking lot there is a proposed trash and recycling enclosure. And if you, uh, see the car that, that's parked next to it just to the left, there could be a conflict with the driver's door hitting the, the front edge of that trash and recycling enclosure. The, um, the enclosure is, uh, setback from the rear property line is not dimensions on the civil engineer's drawing. I just asked Ryan, um, before the meeting started to, if he could give you the dimensions to that. And six point five feet from that easterly property line that's shared with the Moncler Municipal Parking Lot, with the Moncler Municipal Property. Um, I, I, I believe Lisa n- noticed for, um, any additional variances that could be required or requested. Um, I, I would suggest that the dumpster enclosure slides toward the, um, municipal building, uh, common property line, uh, by approximately two feet to avoid conflict with the car door. Uh, that would require, um, um, to my knowledge, a setback variance for the accessory structure. Uh, but I believe that would, uh, provide a solution to avoid any conflicts with the car door and that enclosure. So I, I will answer any questions on, on what I testified, yes.
Let me just ask you, what would be the setback then of the dumpster as relocated from the property line?
Cut, Ryan just indicated it's, sorry, Ryan indicated that's currently shown at six feet, five inches from that rear property line. And I would suggest we make it four feet, five inches from the easterly property line. In other words, move it to the east by two feet, and I believe that's a variance request. Be, and that will be less than six feet. Is that correct, Janice, I believe?
Well, actually, I think it's a rear yard setback, not a side yard setback, so I'll have to, I, I think the variance would be,
It's, this, it's six foot is still the criteria.
Yeah, I guess, that's your structure, it would be six feet, and we're, the six feet from the rear yard, that's from the rear yard line.
That's, then I would suggest, you know, making it the four, four feet, five inches rather than six feet, that's the variance. And therefore we, we would eliminate all conflicts with car doors.
How would that affect the landscaping?
It, it would not affect the landscaping. We, we have, if you look at this exhibit, we have approximately two feet before those, um, those, uh, cedar trees. And we're now substituting the Taylor, uh, Cedars for the, uh, Brody Cedars, uh, which are narrower. So we would still have the, the evergreens to, on the east side of that trash enclosure. So the users of the municipal parking lot would not see the con- the, the, the masonry wall of the trash enclosure, but they would see the, uh, slender evergreen, uh, trees.
Okay.
Okay, um, Mr. Fleischer, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Um, Mr. Moore, do you have any questions?
Not at the moment.
Mr. Church, do you have any questions?
Uh, no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Collett, do you have any questions?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, oh, with reference to the wood fence, um, obviously in time that will require some kind of maintenance. So I'm wondering, you know, uh, if, um, you have a plan or your client has a plan for, for the maintenance of that fence, uh, on both sides, uh, since, uh, would, would your client be assuming responsibility for the appearance of the fence, not only as a basis?
I, I believe, yes. Yes. Uh, John, I believe our clients would take responsibility for the appearance of the fence and maintenance of the fence, being good stewards of this land, once it's developed.
Is that? Do you have any questions?
Sorry, you broke up there, Bill.
Do you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay, um, Mr. Caulfield, do you have any questions?
I believe Mr. Caulfield is, um, had to, to, has a conflict with this application.
Okay, um.
Mr. Moore.
And Mr. Vera, do you have any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I have a couple of questions, I, I guess, picking up on the dumpster, I'm trying to figure out, and it's hard because the engineering plans aren't dimensioned, as to would that put the dumpster closer
What's the audio?
Then the,
Losing audio from Bill.
Yeah. Shows, um, fully functional. Are you hearing me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, any, everybody who's not speaking should, uh, mute themselves to improve the audio quality of the recording.
The, the question is, if, it, will that be closer to the property line than the edge of the parking spaces? Or will, how will it line up in relationship to the parking spaces?
That, that should line up with that curb at the easterly side of the parking space. Again, there's no dimension on the drawing, but, um, I, but, I believe it will line up with the easterly side of that curb.
Okay, and do you know there's a metal fence that's between the municipal parking lot and the parking lot for this? Do you know who's, is that on the property line?
I, I believe that's on the municipal building, uh, property.
Right, because there, there are a number of large trees then that are on the municipal lot. How are you posing to the cedar trees relates to where those trees are? I mean, clearly their roots are, you know, going to extend through the buffer area on, on the subject property.
I'm sorry, you, you're breaking up, is the question, how will we deal with the roots of the existing trees and the new cedar trees?
Yes.
The, um, we, we will have an arborist look at the, you know, any roots that have to be cut. And I, I, I misspoke about that fence. I'm looking at a previous exhibit, which is a survey map of this property, um, prepared by Langen Engineering. Um, and it shows that wire fence on this subject property. So I, I misspoke, I apologize.
Okay, how far onto the property does it show it?
It, it is not dimensioned, um, but it shows it on the other side of those trees. So those, there are approximately three trees shown on the Langen survey. A twenty-four inch caliper tree, an eighteen inch caliper tree closest to, uh, the, the temple property, and then another tree that's not labeled. Those are between, those three trees are shown on the Langen survey between that wire fence and the common property line to the east. But we would be, since those trees are on this subject property, uh, I believe we could remove those trees, uh, since it's on sixty-three Park Street property, and we would definitely remove that wire fence. Any trees on the municipal building, uh, property would have to remain. But there are three trees shown on this subject property on the Langen survey. Uh, I wish I could share my screen, I can't.
Janice, did we get the survey?
It's not part of the engineer submission.
No.
No, I, I just checked.
And it was part of the first PowerPoint presentation. Slide number one.
I just went through our filings, the, the survey was not filed previously as a separate document, other than as an exhibit. We can submit it to the board if necessary.
I'm sorry, this is what you were talking about, Paul?
That's correct, that, that was the exhibit in the first, uh, board meeting. And if you could enlarge the bottom, uh, where the property line is, the easterly property line. All right, so ju- so the dark, dark horizontal line is the property line, the common property line with the municipal building property. You could see that just to the west of that is the solid line with the X's interrupting the solid line, and that's the designation to the existing fence. And then between that fence line, almost where Jan- where Janice, because cursor right there, are two existing trees on the subject property. And then just to the right of that is another existing tree that, uh, is right on the property line, where the cursor is.
And that's the eighteen inch diameter tree?
Correct, and the one all the way to the left is a twenty-four inch caliper tree. And the one in the center, I cannot read the number.
So you're proposing the two trees that are together, you're proposing to remove those?
I, I would propose to remove those, remove the wire fence, and then plant those tailored junipers between the new parking area curbing and the common property line. And I don't see any other trees on that, in that area except for the one to the right that looks to be right on the property line on this Langen survey. And if, if that is on the property line, and if the municipality wants to keep that, then, as I said, we could have an arborist look at the roots of that tree, uh, when planting those, uh, tailored junipers.
Is there an elevation difference between the two properties at the back line? I, I just don't recall, I'm sorry.
No, it's great.
Yeah, to my knowledge, there's not, there, there's no noticeable elevation change.
Okay, thank you. But there's no proposed fence now, if that fence comes down, there's no fence separating the two properties.
That's correct, it would just be the evergreens.
Which I think could be a problem for one of, one or the other of the, uh, property owners.
I think that's, so the, understanding the parking spaces are four feet from the property line?
Yes.
Are they more than four feet?
Four, four.
Yes.
Four, four feet.
Are there any members of the public who have any questions for this witness?
Are they more than four?
Okay, members of the public, all of you, all, uh, all thirty of you are unmuted. Does anybody have a question?
Okay, members of the public, all of you, all, uh, all thirty of you are unmuted. Does anybody have a question?
Are they more than four?
Okay, members of the public, all of you, all, uh, all thirty of you are unmuted.
I, I didn't hear any comments, but clearly they're on a, people are watching this on a time delay.
Is John Basti, you want to call your next witness?
Yes, thank you, our next witness is Ryan Robertson.
Mr. Robinson, are you, Robertson, are you present?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, you were, you testified at the last meeting, and you understand you're still under oath?
Correct.
Okay, proceed.
Thank you. Um, Janice, would you go to, I think it was slide ten? Yes, here we are. So what you're, what you're looking at here is, um, a ground floor plan exploring the idea of disconnecting the two buildings. Um, so no, no connection between the existing garage building and the main building. This was, um, based on some board comments from last month and questions, and we looked at maintaining the two existing buildings as separate structures. So there's a four-foot grade change between the easterly parking lot and the south lawn. If a pedestrian open was to be provided between the buildings, a retaining wall and seven steps would be required, as shown here. Retaining wall is kind of coming off to the south of the building. This approach would require an additional variance to permit the buildings to be located less than twenty-five feet from one another. That's Montclair code three forty-seven dash sixty-four F, where if you zoomed in, that would match the text on the side there. It's four foot nine and a half inches to the north of the garage and six foot to the west of the garage. You can go to the next slide, please. Here's that implication carried up to the next floor level, the first floor. So unit one oh two previously had a terrace over that connecting space, so that gets lost, which we would propose to replace with an inset terrace, as I'm showing here. All the other units would still have the exterior terraces, porches, balconies, and patio spaces. And we wanted to see what would happen to make, to give that amenity to the same unit one oh two. So that's kind of what we came up with when we were exploring. In this plan view you're looking at here, unit one oh one is unchanged. It was two bedrooms, two baths, one thousand forty-six square feet. Unit one oh two did change. Remains a two-bedroom plus den with two and a half baths, but the square footage is now one thousand nine hundred seventeen. Unit one oh three is unchanged from previously, two bedrooms, two baths, one thousand seventy square feet. And unit one oh four is unchanged, one bedroom, one bath, seven hundred eighty-four square.
I'm not understanding what's being described.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because the terrace used to be on the next floor up, I thought.
No, there was a terrace shown here on one oh two that was covering the connection space at the ground level. So you're looking one floor above the ground level, and there was previously a connection at the north. I guess the southeast side. Maybe, Janice, if you, I think you have the other, or we could go to, I could tell you what page the previous plan was. Page sixteen will show what we showed last month. So there's the terrace. Yeah, right where Janice is circling. So with disconnecting the buildings, we got rid of that terrace and showed an inset terrace, kind of where the stairs are shown in this old plan. So maybe flip back to page. What were we, ten or eleven? Eleven. And so this was just seeing what the impact would be if we got rid of that terrace, but still gave this unit one oh two its own terrace. And now if we go to the next page, please. On this floor, unit one oh two, we added the the door that Mr. Fleischer commented on from the hallway to the laundry room. And then we reconfigured the stair here above that inset terrace in unit one oh two. And that's really kind of the only change we're looking at in this plan. Unit two oh one doesn't change in terms of bedrooms or size. Unit two oh three doesn't change either. But as I said, unit one oh two changed in square footage.
So Ryan, just for clarification, you're speaking about changes to separating the building, and that would require the removal of the terrace from unit one oh two. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, and the modification that you just discussed related to the interior redesign per Mr. Fleischer's comment, that is proposed regardless of whether the building's attached or unattached?
I'm sorry, can you rephrase that? I didn't follow you.
The modification that you just described related to the to the interior layout, that, that change would, would be maintained whether the building was attached or unattached. Is that correct?
No, no, that's not right. That's only, because we're losing the terrace, unit one oh two becomes the only unit that doesn't have a terrace. So this is just exploring what would be needed to give that amenity back to unit one oh two.
Right, but did you just describe something after that?
Oh, the, the door, the door from the hallway, we would make that change regardless. That's right.
Correct, thank you. Yes, that's what I meant. Yes.
Sorry, yes.
And so with respect to the disconnection of the building, the reason why the client is looking to have them connected, just to summarize your testimony, is one, because of the grade elevation difference in the south lawn area, which is not supposed to be active?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. I think I had an audio issue.
To summarize what you just described as to why the applicant would like to maintain one connected building is because once you separate it, you have a grade change steps that are required to go down to the south lawn, and the south lawn is not proposed to be active. Is that accurate?
Yeah, yeah, I was going to get to that on the next slide, but yes, that's.
Okay. And then there's the removal of the terrace for unit one oh two, which I believe you just testified to. And lastly, if you can talk about your discussions with the client as far as marketing to an office tenant and their desire as to number of tenants.
Sure, there's just one more slide to go through on this, though it's the elevation. If we could go on that next, and I'll briefly just talk about that impact, and then I'll also mention that. So here is just showing the recessed terrace in the area that's kind of shaded gray. Whereas before, we had it shown above that man that was connecting the two buildings. So this is just showing what would be needed, the four-foot grade difference. You can see we're stepping down. And, and maybe it's best to go back to page ten. Yeah, so I'll go, I'll recap the reasons. We kind of went through this whole exercise to see what it would look like to see what we don't like about it or what we do like about it. And so after we studied this alternative, we reviewed with the client, we all felt it was a less desirable solution for a couple of reasons. So one, it requires the additional variance that's shown on here. When we were in initial discussions with the client, this was sort of a driving factor that connecting the structures eliminated the need for the variance, but it also had the appeal of allowing them to rent to one commercial tenant in this office space. So disconnecting the office space makes it less feasible to rent to a single tenant. But that was kind of one of the first design goals that was identified that we worked on in producing our design. Reason two was the balcony that we just talked about in unit one oh two. I don't need to recap that. We kind of talked about that. And lastly, the south lawn. Yeah, there's, we're not proposing any sort of gathering space there. The four-foot grade difference means we need a sort of pedestrian connection as shown that we don't really anticipate getting much use out of, or we don't really envision the need for that foot traffic. And so those were the main reasons.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Fleischer, if you have any questions?
I, I have, I have a couple of questions. First of all, thank you for the change on the upper floor. Who says you have to put a stairway in there? You don't put a connection in there. You, I mean, the reality is you don't have to put a connection in there. No one says because you have a space, you now have a stairway. And, and just, just to clarify, I had no problem with the terrace that was sticking there. It had to do with the base of the building. And if you look at the elevation, the original elevation, there is no reason why the wall had to necessarily come out the way it did. And that's what I, that was the objection. I had no objection to the terrace where it was. And no objection not looking to have an inboard terrace. I hadn't, what, can we go back to the original elevation?
Ryan, is there a?
Yeah, I'm looking at, at page twenty-three would show the south elevation previously.
The problem I had, as you can see, you could have that terrace in there. It simply gets, can't leave it out over it. I understand that. The problem I had is with the materiality of this element under that terrace that goes all the way down to the ground and sits forward of the whole wall, and there's no differentiation in material or anything else between what I will call the walls that come down from the, from the addition above, the solid addition above and this garage. And it can be done with material changes or something else. I wasn't looking to eliminate the terrace. The terrace could have existed because the connection takes place below that. If that became some type of light structure, a glass structure, something other than continuity of literally the exact same material punching further out than the main building, you could have both the differentiation and not have that solid element that is built exactly the same as the wall of the addition. That was the problem. The problem wasn't simply connection was a problem. I thought there might be another way to make the connection, but you could still do it without the solidity of what you've placed beneath the terrace. I had no problem with the layout. I had no problem with the terrace. It's the solidity of that wall, which is, as I understand it, exactly the same as the base of the main, of this main section of the building next to it. And all, what, what, what I'm looking for is something that doesn't actually place that solid wall forward of the base of the main structure. And it doesn't make me a lightweight in glass or something else if you still need the connection. I don't want to fight about the connection. I'm not supposed to be concerned about what's absolutely the best way for him to make the most money with a rental or anything else. That's not my concern. My concern is to make a real clear distinction between the new addition, the old garage visually, so that they don't appear to be the continuity of the same wall. And what's even worse is that wall pops further out than the face of the building. So anything that can lighten that up will frankly put glass there and put plants in front of it. So it still makes a clear distinction between what I will call the wall of the main structure of that now three-story structure and the wall that comes down vertically from it from the garage. So it had nothing to do with necessarily.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think we, we thought we wanted to see what would happen if it was truly disconnected, but I mean, speaking with the client, we're, they are fine with making that glass. The change in materiality, they're excited about and adding plants there.
I think, I think the change in materiality and everything else, as long as it doesn't read as if it were part of this new three-story addition, which is a major piece of the add-on to this project that's been built out here. I think then it reads through separately. And then there's a very clear distinction that separates the garage, the old garage structure from the new vertical element of the main structure and doesn't appear like it's just a pop-out of, of a brick wall. So I think if, if it's glazed in or, or at least set back, it can't be set back further than the other wall, but something that makes it distinctive as a connector as opposed to being the same as the base of the other building. So if you have a distinctive connector, I, I have no problem with it. I think what's shown there on this elevation when I saw it is what I had a significant objection to, both from a preservation, I'll call it historic preservation perspective, as well as a clear distinction between what had been this garage structure and this whole new addition. So you can, you can do it with materials, some issue of materiality. Again, it's, it's always this knuckle connection that, that drives me a little crazy when I look at it. So that's what it was. And I, I wasn't looking, I, I always thought you could keep the terrace up there just the way you had it. Because it's essentially, it can, it can effectively bypass the garage itself. You're not worried about that. So it's, it's just a way of doing it.
That's great. I think the applicant's main concern was to have one office, office tenant and for the flexibility to do that. And I think they're, they'd be happy to make that glass.
Or, or something that distinguishes the connection from the base of the building.
Sure.
I leave, I leave it to you and, and Paul to figure out what that might be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Okay, let me try and do this simpler. If there are any other board members with questions, can you unmute yourself and start asking, and we'll just go as I see you unmuted. And if no one does?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Viera.
Yes, so on the last iteration for the existing parking lot, you had a bathroom there. Is that going to remain or is that going to change?
We were proposing to maintain the existing layout, the layout that was shown at the last board hearing, so it will remain.
Okay, there it is. Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Any other board members with questions?
I have a question now.
Okay.
In regards to the HVAC on the roof, what's, what are the sound levels of that? And, and at what range is it able to be seen by neighbors or people walking on the sidewalks?
Let's see. We had previously talked about the visibility. I'm looking for a slide that will illustrate this. I couldn't, I couldn't speak to the sound levels because it hasn't been designed, so I couldn't address that, but I could talk about the visibility a little bit.
And with respect to the sound levels, these will be on the roof and screen, so I'm sure that will shield the sound, but there's also noise ordinances that we must comply with. So the maximum that it could possibly be is sixty-five dB A during the day and fifty-five during the nighttime hours at the residential property lines. So we will absolutely be complying with that. I am not a sound expert, but I would bet that this would be lower than that. But, but we would have to comply with your noise ordinance.
Thank you, Lisa.
Forty-eight and forty-nine show the, the renderings, which you'll see kind of more of a bird's eye view. Oh, I'm sorry, there, we're looking at the elevations, which show like a straight ahead view of the screening. But I think sheet forty-nine and forty-eight. Will kind of show what, what the pedestrian level view of the screen will be. So there you see, this is the old version of the elevation, but it's essentially the same, and that, that corner is actually clipped back a little bit in the newer roof plan. So, but you'll see a little bit of it from the sidewalk, but not much. And in the rear, it's really just the people that, that park here. And then we're going to have tall trees. We did a study, actually. Find that sheet. There's this page fifty-seven. Please, Janice. That showed a sightline view of the plantings.
That's what I wanted to see.
Yeah, there you go. So if you're standing in the municipal parking lot, you really have no chance of seeing that screening that was shown in the, the rear elevation. If you're on the other side of the trees parking your car, you will see it in your own building.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yep, thank you.
Any other board members with questions? So unmute yourself and start talking. I, I have a question. Go ahead. I have a question for Paul that I missed before. The, the sweetcoms you're proposing, previously, there was testimony about putting the light poles lined up with the lines between the parking spaces. I want to understand how that will relate to where the sweetcoms are going.
Okay, if we, Janice, if we could turn to slide three. Is that where we are? Yes. Three is good. Okay. We've coordinated the light poles with the parking lot stripes and the sweep. There are no light poles on that, first to answer the question. There are no light poles proposed on the north, northerly property line. All of the lighting on that north side of the building is on the building, on the north face of the building. The there is one. there is one pole-mounted light just above the the right-hand uh shade tree in the rear parking area. So the northernmost uh shade tree in that rear parking area just above that to the west is a is a light pole within that peninsula that that's now being proposed to be permeable pavers. China. Okay. Janice, if you can enlarge the bottom of that slide, especially along the that easterly property line. So at the bottom left, where there is the number three in a rectangle, uh just to the bottom right of that rectangle is a it's another rectangle uh online with that stripe between parking stall five and six. That's a a pole-mounted light fixture. And then the other pole-mounted light fixture is um to the right or to the north of um of the last part, right where your cursor is. That's a a light fixture. So that as that trash enclosure gets slid the two feet uh to the east, that'll be uh up against that um the base of that light pole. So that's where the other light pole is. And then, as I stated, the other light fixtures are are building-mounted on the north face um of the building. And there's also one light fixture in that peninsula just above where that uh yellowwood tree is. The bottom right of those three shade trees. So to answer the question, there are no no more conflicts with the light poles. Uh, and there are no conflicts with the trees in the light poles. Are there things for this witness?
No, you're breaking up. I don't know what the reason is, but you keep breaking up.
We'll try again. Are there any members of the public who have questions for this witness?
Members of the public, you are now unmuted. This is your opportunity to ask questions.
Janice, any?
No, no questions.
Okay, is John Bastian want to call your last witness?
Yes, our last witness is Justin Osilio, who is our professional planner.
Okay, are you present?
Yes, I'm here. Can you see me?
I do not.
I'm I'm not sure. Uh, my my video is on.
You were there and then you just disappeared.
Am I here?
Yeah, I see you. Yep.
All right, would you, while we see you, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
Yes, I do.
State your name and address, please.
Uh, Justin Osziello, uh, one twenty-five Half Mile Road, Suite two hundred, Red Bank, zero seven seven zero one.
Thank you.
Can you still see me?
Yes, Justin, have you previously testified before the Moncler zoning board?
Uh, I don't believe so.
Can you briefly go through your professional educational background?
Absolutely. Um, I am a um licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed since two thousand eight. I have a master's in planning from Rutgers University that was granted in two thousand and five. Um, in in the course of my my planning uh practice, I've prepared uh master plans, uh redevelopment plans, prominent preservation plans, a variety of plans, but uh, you know, relative to applications like this, I I provide a testimony and analysis, uh zoning analysis, land use analysis for many similar applications. Um, I've appeared uh at land use boards in eighteen counties. Uh, I've also appeared at boards, uh, you know, hundreds of 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 times uh over over the last, uh, gosh, uh, thirteen or so years.
And you've been accepted as a expert in professional planning at those before those boards?
Yes, I've
And is your license current?
License is current.
They'll accept him.
Thank you. Justin, if you could, uh, describe to the board what you did to prepare for your testimony this evening?
Absolutely. Um, so I visited the site, uh, I visited the the surrounding area, uh, I walked the area, uh, I reviewed uh the township zoning ordinance uh and the master plan. And of course, um, I've reviewed all of the plans uh that were previously at uh the the first two hearings, uh, which I had attended as well, um, and and this hearing as well.
And in connection with this application, we requested several variances, mainly to deviate from a condition of a conditional use uh height variance, as well as bulk variances for rear yard and side yard setback due to existing structures and as testified to tonight for moving the dumpster closer to the municipal property line. Uh, if you could, please go through the proofs, uh, get the planning proofs and if you believe uh whether those proofs can be granted.
Yes, absolutely. Um, so to to the first variance, uh, a uh a um the the variance under under commentary uh for D three, um, you know, the the uh the standard for that is is whether the use would would still be appropriate. You know, for the property, uh, notwithstanding the fact that uh the the OR three zone uh does not allow uh the residential units on on the first floor. I think the reasoning for this uh would be the fact that uh that the residential on the first floor, while that may be the case, that's due to the uh the sloping of the property. Uh, the the topography of the property changes as as uh and it slopes downward, as you had heard uh from from a few of the previous witnesses. Uh, it slopes uh um seven feet uh from the front to the rear. So um while while it may be on the first floor, this this is due to to the sloping. So I think um despite the fact that the variance is required, uh, I believe that, uh, you know, consistent with the commentary case, the the use uh remains uh um, you know, fine for um for the site and with i- in the O- in the OR three zone. Relative to the height variance, uh, the the D six variance, uh, the the Grasso case has a similar standard. Um, can it be accommodated? Can the site accommodate uh the additional height? I believe you heard uh from from both architects here and potentially the engineer that uh the ridgeline of uh the 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 building which currently sits there today, um, that will be maintained. So so little to no visual impact. I think from uh from a planning standpoint, but not even a planning standpoint, just from a layperson's standpoint, uh, you know, standing on park, this this proposal will stay will will still maintain the the two-point-five, two-point-five-story look on Park Ave. And of course, uh, the grade drops by by seven feet from uh from from Park Ave um to the rear. The uh the height is is visually compatible with the surrounding properties. Um, and as you just heard this evening as well, um, the building's gonna be uh well-screened by the existing and proposed landscaping and vegetation. Um, I think importantly as well, the uh the four stories and and the height of this building uh will be most visible from from the township parking lot. So when we're looking at, and I'll get to that later, the negative criteria, but uh under the positive criteria, when when we're looking at, you know, you know, the detriments, um, I I don't see much in the way of detriments. Uh, but certainly, um, the view along Park, um, where which, you know, a lot of development along Park, obviously, uh, the this will this will uh the the building will will maintain the the uh the two-point-five um story look that that currently uh exists today. Relative uh to these variances and uh and and the other variances that are required, um, I also believe that there is a C one case um for this, uh, due to uh obviously the location of the existing, uh, you know, structures that are currently on the site. Uh, I believe that there are there are practical difficulties um that that creates uh hardships. The site, as I had said, is is obviously developed uh in a potential uh historic district. I believe it's been made clear, and I won't belabor the point uh from the architect, uh, of course, that the the architectural value of this property is is being is being preserved. Um, and and also their additions to the matching uh ridge lines. Uh, again, residential on the floor, uh, to the slope of the property. And also importantly, uh, as I believe has been has been has been stated on on many occasions throughout the testimony, um, the the connection of the former um parking garage to the building and then then converting that used to the office, of course, triggers the two-yard variances. Uh, however, of course, the the structure is is not changing, you know, relative uh to to where it currently sits. Certainly believe that um uh and under the positive criteria, uh, there are many purposes of uh of the MLUL or purposes of zoning that are advanced. Um, uh, the the population densities, uh, I believe here are appropriate. That's that's criteria E. Um, the visual environment obviously is is desirable. Um, you know, creative uh design here and good civic design, as you as you heard from the architects, it's criteria I. Um, sufficient space, uh, you know, you know, clearly, um, we are working with uh with structure that currently exists. Um, and I believe, you know, the applicant and its and its uh its engineer and its architects have uh have done a a wonderful job, um, you know, to to design uh this site, and especially from, in my opinion, as a as a professional planner, believe that the criteria G is advanced, uh, given that there's there's sufficient space um to accommodate. Uh, and uh being that this is a potential uh historic site, I believe the applicant is is doing uh its best efforts to uh to conserve that as well, and and that's uh that's criteria J. Um, so I think um on the on the positive criteria, um, there are reasons, uh, you know, relative to um the existing structures on the site, uh, the topography um as well, but also in addition to that, uh, the purposes of zoning, uh, there are multiple purposes of zoning that uh will be uh propelled uh by by this application. Relative to the negative criteria, I certainly believe that uh the the variances that are required will not present a substantial detriment to public good. Um, certainly, there are opportunities here being created uh for housing and uh the uh uh and 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 certainly, uh, um, you know, for the affordable housing as well. Uh, preservation of this building, um, building has been here for a long time. Um, certainly, uh, it's it's a much better planning alternative, in my professional opinion, uh, to preserve it uh as opposed to to raising it and and building something else on this property. Uh, the um the the visual environment, uh, quite desirable. Um, especially, and it's gonna be enhanced with the existing and proposed landscaping, um, with with tall trees in the side yard. I also think in in importantly as well, you know, from a planning standpoint, especially when when I review applications on the public side, I think it's important here that the maximum uh coverage here, the impervious coverage uh and and the uh the the maximum building coverage, uh, this is below both of them. So I so I think that's also a a very important point. Uh, front yard spaces will will um parking spaces um are 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 being scratched. So so that's being that's also a a benefit as well, um, reducing any any potential impacts to the public good. Uh, relative to whether there will be a detriment to the zone plan and and the zoning ordinance, um, I certainly um don't see much in the way of any detriment. Uh, the visual impact is minimal. Uh, the the uh the current ridgeline of the building uh will uh will continue. Um, the the non-conformity that relates to the parking in the front yard, a- as I had said, uh, that's going to uh be be uh removed. And 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 uh there there's a goal uh that I thought was important from uh the twenty twenty-one uh land use plan for the municipality. It it states that the the current zoning standards for for residential uh should be looked at against uh the the current form in in these residential neighborhoods to ensure that uh the the new developments and and renovations uh will will advance the overall uh neighborhood character. Um, one, one, one important point that I think is very salient here, uh, it says that the the front yard setbacks um should be uh reviewed. And and also um for for unit types that permit uh townhouses and in multi-units and one of the zones being listed is is the zone in which this property um is is located. Um, so I so I certainly think that this application uh would um be propelled at uh that that purpose as well from for the reexamination plan. Um, relative to the zone plan, um, certainly don't see um much in the way of uh any any issues here or detriments. It's gonna promote uh multiple purposes of the twenty sixteen uh land use element. You know, housing types, um, a variety of housing types for for uh for for diverse populations. Um, harmonious development, uh, that's consistent with the the existing development in in scale and style of the surrounding area, uh, the affordable housing opportunities, of course, um, and to to maintain uh the older housing stock. Um, certainly, you know, the maintenance and 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 preservations of older homes, which is stated as one of the goals. This is happening here, uh, and the the architectural heritage of the township. Uh, it's obviously very charming. Uh, it's it it defines uh the township and and that's something that uh the board is also seeing here with 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 this application. So there there certainly are plenty of benefits um with this application. Um, you heard from from many witnesses, um, and and certainly I I think that the the detriments, um, if there are any, uh, they're they're not substantial. That concludes my testimony.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Mr. Fleischer, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Mr. Moore, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Mr. Church?
Oh, I do not have any questions.
Mr. McCullough?
Uh, no questions.
Ms. Harris?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Viera?
No questions.
Okay, I don't have any questions. Are there any members of the public who either have questions for this witness? Or if if you have anything whatsoever you want to say about the application, this is your opportunity to do that. We will unmute you and do whatever you need to do to make sure we're aware you want to say something about the application.
Okay, members of the public, you are unmuted. So if anybody has any comments or questions, this is the time.
If you have anything, this is your last opportunity to say anything or ask any questions about the application. Dennis, you see any when giving any indication?
No, I have to, I have no uh, no indications, no comments.
Ms. John, do you have a do you want to sum up now?
Uh, just very briefly, our uh the applicant has spent an extraordinary amount of time and attention to the appropriate development of the site for mixed-use development. Uh, we believe it's a great example of rehab of of a potentially uh historic site. Um, and for all the reasons that have been stated by our professionals, including our planner, we believe that the proofs have been justified in order for the board to grant the relief that has been requested, and we would ask you to look favorably upon this application. Thank you.
We'll start discussion with Mr. Moore.
I'm generally in favor of the application. I see this uh as a an enhancement and not as a detriment. Think it looks like a nice application. Think it looks like a nice application.
Mr. Church?
I'm also in favor of the application. I think that the preservation of structures in Montclair should always be a criteria we should, as a board, try to obtain. I think they've attempted that and they've succeeded in doing that with this building. Too often, it's simpler for developers to come in and take down a building and put up a new building with all the property involved in this application. Therefore, I'd be, I'm very much in favor of this application because of the nature of the development.
Okay, Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Initially, I was very concerned about the plan for residential living in this building, this particular location. Also had a very, very strong reservation about the elevation of height. Concerned that our compliment is disabled.
Having some trouble hearing.
I'm sorry, maybe you've been muddled. No, I was just saying that initially I was very concerned about the residential usage of this facility, the way that it was being proposed. And similarly, in terms of the height of the facility, that probably was of even greater concern for me than the residential dimensions. But I'm satisfied with the presentation and arguments that have been made. I think the care that has been demonstrated in this proposal. And I would have to say that I'm generally with the proposal as it has been.
Ms. Harris?
I'm in favor of this application. I think the applicant has taken steps to address our concerns over the last three hearings. The height is a little bit concerning, but I think given its appearance from Park Street, I don't think it will look too out of place in relation to the adjacent buildings. And to Mr. Church's point, I appreciate the fact that the existing improvements are going to be preserved as opposed to demolished or raised.
Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm also generally in favor of this application. I think the applicant has demonstrated the willingness to make the different changes based on the comments that the board has made. And I'm also, you know, I also like the fact that they were able to work with us in terms of the affordable unit as to make it substantially similar in size and quality than the other units. So that's definitely a plus. So yes, I'm in general in favor. Thank you.
Mr. Fleischer?
I'm also in favor of the application. I think when the applicant first came in, the additional massing they had, particularly on the south, was a real detriment to the site and to the surroundings. But they did pull that back and I'm appreciative of that. I have different feelings about architectural style and how you replicate or do additions on buildings of this nature. It would have been nice to see a more of a sense of the original building sort of standing alone with things appended to it, but I think overall they've done a very good job and therefore I'm in favor of the application.
Also in favor of the application, I think the revisions they've made over the meetings have addressed the concerns that we raised. I think they have demonstrated they meet the Coventry Square criteria for the conditional use variance. I think they have demonstrated that, given that they are not making the addition any taller than the existing building justified the height variance. I think the various bulk variances have been justified, both in terms of how they're improving the aesthetics of the site and given the existing conditions on the property. To go through conditions which are more or less as they came up and someone has to alert me if some have become irrelevant. That the, any lighting poles that are within the parking area or adjacent to the parking area be located along the stripes separating the parking spaces. That they comply with the Affordable Housing Ordinance. That any signage conformed to the ordinance. That they comply with the Electrical Vehicle Charging Station statute that was recently enacted. That they comply with Conditions 6, 7, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 17 in the Engineer's Memo. That they comply with the Tree Removal Ordinance. That they eliminate the support columns in the rear of the building. That they add the second door for Unit 102. That all undersized parking spaces be marked as compact. That we should note that we're approving the revised landscaping plans with the October date. So it's clear that that's what the landscaping is supposed to conform to. That they not remove the tree that overlaps with the municipal property without permission of the township, and if that tree is to remain, they have a qualified arborist evaluate where the proposed red cedars along that property line are placed so as to not unduly disturb the root structure of that tree. They relocate the dumpster so it winds up with the rear of the parking spaces along the Easterly property line. And we're obviously granting the associated variance for that location. And that the connector between the garage and the main structure be constructed of materials that will differentiate it from the main building. And that's all I have. And just if anyone either has further comments or has any questions or thinks some conditions are removed or other conditions added.
Mr. Chair, can I comment on one of the conditions?
Sure.
There is a condition to eliminate the support columns in the rear. I know that that was raised at one of the prior meetings, but I thought that the board was satisfied that the support columns can remain. That was our intention for those columns remaining.
Can we look at those?
I don't know which slide.
Paul Sionis, would you know what slide?
Here's the support column from here.
Right, you can see it on that slide.
I guess if I could, I guess the question was, it seemed actually that it could be done without those support columns, which would then really clear the sidewalk and prevent cars or anybody else from hitting those columns. And in some cases, they fell in awkward locations as well. That was what the original discussion was.
Janice, can you pull up the landscape plan again, maybe the slide number two or three? Right, so slide.
Slide two, three?
Two is, yeah, two is, that is clearer.
Okay.
But, yeah, so if you can enlarge that. You can see the columns on there. That doesn't really show the columns well.
I think there's one here.
Yeah, there's one between stalls one and two and then one. Yeah, between the barrier-free space three and the striped access aisle. I don't think they interfere. They won't interfere with the charging stations. The charging stations could be mounted to the side of the column.
I thought the issue was that they limit the sidewalk width.
We have four foot three from the column to the face of the building when you're passing by a column.
Right, that's not bad. Well, I'll speak for the applicants. They prefer not to remove those columns. It would make it more difficult to construct the upper floors.
Joe, this is your, I mean, I think, I mean, other board members.
I didn't have, I did not have a big issue with the columns, but they certainly could be that the upper mast could certainly be cantilevered for that relatively short distance. That doesn't mean it's not more expensive to do it that way. But unless there's a specific reason to remove them, we all might, in the long run, if they stay.
I don't have an objection to them saying.
Any other board members? Okay, so any further discussion among board members? Does someone want to make a motion, I guess, doing all those conditions I stated, except for the removal of the columns?
With approval of the application with the conditions stated by the chair, with the conditions stated by the chair, yes.
I second.
Okay, someone, Janice, you want to call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Church? Mr. Church, you have to unmute yourself.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Fleischer?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
And Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. We truly appreciate your time and attention to this application. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, let's take a 10-minute break before we do the application on North Mountain. Because I think that's going to be, take a while. So we'll resume at 9:30.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good. Okay, thanks.
You had a conflict with that, right, John? Which is why I didn't call your name.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, you're, yeah, that's right. Thank you.
Alan, I don't see your microphone, so you make, make sure you turn it on. Ah, there you go. Okay, Alan?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Thank God. Uh, I would not want a repeat of Monday night's planning board meeting with my connection issues, embarrassing as they were.
Okay, good.
Okay, um, are we back on TV?
Okay, and I'm recording.
Okay, the next application is out of Diane Russell for property at two sixty eight North Mountain Avenue. This is an application to construct an existing to the, in addition to the existing garage, a new, a new off-street parking space and retaining walls on the property. The property is in the R one, one family zone. And is designated on the township tax map as lot nine and block six hundred and three of variances requested for Montclair code, section three forty seven dash twenty-two A to construct in addition to the previously approved accessory building, located in the front yard of variance is also requested from Montclair code, section three forty seven dash one C to permit a retaining wall of greater than four feet, four point five feet in height. When built in front of the extreme rear corners of the principal building, a variance is also requested from Montclair code, section three forty seven dash forty-six C to locate an off-street parking space between the main building and the curve on the street on which the building fronts. Are taxes paid and is the notice in order?
Uh, yes.
Okay, Mr. Trembleak, do you want to give your appearance and proceed?
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, members of the board. Alan Trembleak, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Diane Russell, who's the owner of the property at two sixty eight North Mountain Avenue. Uh, this is an application for several variances required in order to widen an existing driveway located in the uh, front yard of this property. The, I believe, can discuss the variance as, as we go, but I believe we need two uh, variances relating to retaining wall height as well as a variance to permit an additional parking space in the front yard. Now, um, regarding the front yard parking, I know very well how the board feels about front yard parking variances, and that was uh, made quite clear in the connection with an application I had several months ago regarding property on North Willow Street, as you'll recall. Uh, however, this is a somewhat unusual or certainly different situation. Because this property, like a number of other properties on the westerly or upper side of North Mountain Avenue, um, has a garage built underground into the slope of the land very close to the, to the street. And that existing structure was um, approved by a variance granted by this board uh, in nineteen fifty-seven. Um, so you have this existing, you know, subterranean garage with a, a driveway leading to it from North Mountain Avenue. Um, my client purchased this property in two thousand twenty. It was a vacant, dilapidated, foreclosed property. She's been rehabilitating it ever since. And as part of her renovations, she um, uh, you know, wanted to widen the very, what was a very narrow driveway. And, you know, as you can see from the slide and the photograph, that's towards the bottom of the uh, left-hand side of the exhibit. Um, the area was previously widened. And we're here today seeking, originally my client was not intending to um, um, use that for front yard parking, but, you know, she has decided that she really needs another front yard parking, another parking space. This is the only place really on the property where it could be located, so that's the relief we're seeking. Um, and I basically have two witnesses to present this evening. First witness will be uh, my client, and then followed by our, our architect, Jeffrey Lewis. So, um, I'd like to call Diane Russell as my first witness.
Ms. Russell, are you present?
Uh, Ms. Russell, I made you a panelist, so you need to turn on your microphone, and you should be able to testify. Mr. Lewis, I'm unable to make you a panelist, but I will be able to unmute you. I just unmuted you, so you should be able to, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry, this is my first time doing this. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
Yes, I do.
Would you state your name and address, please?
Diane Russell. I live at two sixty eight North Mountain Avenue, Montclair, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Um, Diane, um, you own the property at two sixty eight North Mountain Avenue?
Yes, I do.
When did you purchase the property?
Uh, March sixteenth, uh, two thousand twenty.
Okay, and who did you purchase the property from?
Oh, gosh, uh, it was a foreclosed property um, from the bank that owned it.
Okay, was anyone living in the house at the time?
No, it had been vacant since, I believe, July of twenty nineteen.
Can you just generally describe the condition of the, of the house and the property at the time you acquired it, for the foreclosure sale?
Um, it was not in great shape. I had to completely renovate it, full of knob and tube wiring, um, systems and things that didn't work anymore. Um, water was getting in the basement, um, the gutters were hanging off the house. Um, so it really had been abandoned.
Okay, all right. And so have you been in the process of renovating it, renovating the house since you purchased the property?
Yes.
And those renovations are continuing to this day, is that right?
Yes, they are.
Okay, um, okay, um. All right, by the way, have you um, improved the house to the point where you were able to, to move into it and, and live there?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
Mostly the interior stuff.
All right, so um, we're here to discuss the um, garage located on the property. Janice, would you be able to pull up the first uh, photograph that I sent over this afternoon?
Okay.
There were two photographs, I mean, I heard of both of them.
All right, um.
Photo one and photo two, there you go.
Photo one and photo two, okay.
Do we need, do we need to mark these, Janice, as we go?
We can mark this as A one.
Okay. All right, Diane, you see the photograph on the screen?
Yes, I do.
All right, and that shows the house and the garage located to the left of the house towards the street, is that right?
Right.
All right, and is this the condition, I mean, is that the location and the condition of the garage, you know, at the time you purchased the property?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and, all right. So, in the course of performing your renovations, um, did you make any changes to that air, part of the property where the garage and the driveway is located?
Yes, I moved the retaining wall that you see on the right, um, I moved it over to allow myself to be able to maneuver out of my car and have visibility to see the street.
All right, is that, is that the reason you relocated, you know, widened the area?
Yes, it was too narrow. I couldn't really get out of my car without hitting the wall with the door. Um, maybe I need to lose a little weight, but it was just too difficult. And then also, I couldn't really see, um, as I was backing up onto North Mountain.
Okay, all right, um, Janice, can we go to photo two?
All right, we'll mark this as exhibit A two.
Okay, um, Diane, does this photograph show the um, relocated retaining wall as well as the extended retaining wall next to the garage door?
Yes, it does.
Okay, now, I'm, I'm not sure when this photograph was taken, but um, I know the construction equipment and materials that are shown there, they're no longer on the property, but other than that, that photograph essentially shows the condition of the expanded area and the relocated retaining walls as they exist today. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right, um. Now, when you, when you had the work done, obviously you didn't do it yourself to um, relocate and, and expand the retaining walls, um, did you get a permit to do that work?
Uh, no, not at the time I, I did that, no.
Okay, were you aware that a permit was required in order to do that?
Uh, no, I was not, because I originally had a permit to repair the walls, um, because they were crumbling. Um, but I was not aware that moving the wall would require a, a permit.
All right, so um, after the, the, the work was done, uh, did, did you learn that a permit was required? And if so, how did you learn that?
Um, I was contacted by Richard Duran.
Okay, and what did he say, if you can recall?
Um, just, I had, it, it wasn't zoning compliant, and he and I and Mariano, who um, works with Jeff as my architect, um, had been working with, with Richard to come up with a plan that would then be zoning compliant. Um, but I was not aware of, of that when I did this.
Okay, but after you were made aware of it by Richard, you then had discussions with him and your architect in order to come up with a plan that would comply with the Montclair zoning ordinance requirements, is that right?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and did you subsequently, you know, come up with a plan um, that you were told was co- was compliant with the, with the applicable zoning ordinance provisions?
Yes, I was, back in, in January.
Okay, and um, did your architect actually prepare a formal plan?
Yes, he did. And he revised other permits, um, along with this, and other work that was being done in the house, and other changes that were being made.
All right, and was that plan um, submitted to the town, uh, and was a building permit issued based upon the plan that was submitted?
Yes, it was.
And did you say that was in, in like January of two thousand twenty-one?
Yes.
All right, um. Janice, if you can pull up the exhibit I sent over, I think I called it January two thousand twenty-one plan.
Did you send it over today?
It was on the list.
I saw it on your list there.
Oh, okay, all right, so let me go back to my list. I see schematic rendering.
Janice, I think it's in the photos folder.
In the photos, okay.
There you go, yeah.
This one, the January twenty twenty-one plan?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, we'll mark this as A3.
Okay. All right. Now, I realize this isn't not the, isn't the full set of plans that were submitted, but simply shows the area that we're discussing with the, you know, the driveway and the garage there. You see that on the screen, Denise? I mean, Diane, sorry about that.
Yes, I do.
Okay, and that plan seems to show some terracing in the corner of the expanded driveway area. Do you see that?
Yes, it does.
That your understanding as to what the revisions were required in order to comply with zoning and for a building permit to be issued?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and again, that's the work that was, for which a permit was issued, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to represent to the board, obviously this was part, this is an excerpt from a full set of plans on, that I have for 24 by 36 inch paper. But most importantly, you can see on, on the right hand side, the stamps, you know, indicating that the plan was approved by the building department, I think on January 21st. So. Okay, so after that permit was applied for and obtained, did you subsequently decide you wanted to do something different in that area? With the, with the new retaining walls are?
Yes, I did, and I discussed with Richard that I would need to get a variance to make any changes to this.
All right, so can you explain what it was you wanted to do and why?
Um, so I wanted to maintain the ability, not that I need it right now, but I do have two teenage children. So I wanted to have the option of being able to park a car on that right side.
Okay.
Which the, the terrorist wall on the right would block. I also, you know, think this is aesthetically not the nicest looking thing. Think it looks a little odd with the wall on the right.
Okay, so, by the way, is there any other park, are there any other parking areas or driveways on your property other than this?
No, and there can't be, because the garage is built into the, into the hill. And it has a very steep slope, so there's no other place that there could be.
Okay, so you decided you wanted to have the ability to park another vehicle on the property, and in order to do that, you needed a variance to allow for the front yard parking space. And you also needed a variance because of your elimination of that terrorist wall on the, on the side of the, right side of the new retaining wall there?
Yes.
Okay, and that's the reason why you filed the application that's before the board this evening?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I think one final question, I mean, if the board were to deny this application, would it be your intention to then proceed and complete the plans that were approved by the building department that we're looking at right now?
Yes, I would need to.
Okay. All right. Uh, no further questions, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Fleischer, do you have any questions?
I just need, I'm trying to, the, the wall that's hatched, can you go in and that air, can you blow up that area?
And that, here?
Yeah, that, that, that hatched wall that's there. That was, that was already built before you were told it was not legal to do so. Is, is that my understanding? I, I'm trying to under, was that wall already there? And then Mr. Sherun said, in order to make the wall compliant, you need to terrace it down. And therefore, this other wall, which is not shown hatched, was then all, added on to the scheme. In other words, was the, the original wall already built? That's what I'll call the double wired zone.
So the hatched line that you see was the original wall? And the, and then I moved it over. So the wall that you see to the right is existing now.
I, I understand that, but that was already, you had already built that wall before someone came and said it's not legal.
Yes.
Or you had already taken down the first wall and built the second wall?
Yes, I had.
Okay. I mean, that's, that's my only question, I bet. I don't want to discuss my issues with this. We, we have plenty of homes and people living in much tighter situations than this is. And we simply don't allow for that parking that you are looking for in conditions where they don't have any parking spaces. And this, and, and your original explanation was that the driveway was narrow. And I, and I understand that. But there were probably other ways of just giving you enough sightline to look out. So I, I have, just from a standpoint of precedent, we have situations where the parking is far more dire than this, that we just don't do this front yard parking. I mean, the garage was there, the ability to put a car in the driveway behind whatever car is in the garage, that sort of always existed though. In theory, the only parking, the only approved parking is the parking in the garage. I, I need something beyond, I'd like to have it for my teenage sons to have yet another car. Given, given the conditions we face in so many other places in town. That, that's a hard leap for me to make, at least, other people may have different opinions, but you had already created the pla, you had already created the, I'll call it the tarmac to do that without seeking the approval, and then that's a problem for me, because simply the notion that you built it doesn't mean that it's okay to stay. And I'm not saying to take it down, but we've certainly asked people to take down things that were built and weren't approved in the past, so I have some real problems with this. I just needed to understand the facts of, of the timing of this thing. That's all I have, Mr.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make a point? I see that there is a member of the public, specifically Barry Denistrian, who has opened up a chat. I just ask him that he will have an opportunity to ask questions and make a statement with regard to this application. But it's not, we, we don't want a chat going on the side. We need everything on the record. Uh, Mr. Moore, do you have any questions? Mr. Moore? Mr. Church, do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, I think, hang on. Am I all right, am I?
Yes.
Okay, this wall here is easy, is this proposed or is it there?
The, the wall that you see on yellow is there.
Is the unhatched wall is proposed?
No.
Or was there and you took it down? I wasn't clear on that.
It was there and I took it down.
Okay, so now you have a square area right here that goes right back to this part of the retaining wall, correct?
Right.
Now, and, just so I have clarification. This wall here is approved?
No.
No, is not approved?
With the terracing in front of it, yes.
It's approved with the terracing, but the,
Yes.
If the terracing comes down, the wall is not approved.
It's not there.
Not there now, it would have to be.
Yeah, it has to be, it has to be added. But, you know, I came to the board for the variance to do something slightly different, which is to just keep the back wall and not do the wall to the right. So pending the decision of this board, I haven't put the terrorist walls up yet.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McCullough, do you have any questions?
Uh, just want to get some clarification, so currently are you actively parking two vehicles, one inside the garage and one on the exterior of the garage?
Um, currently I only have one car. I generally park it outside of the garage.
Oh, generally you park on the outside of the garage?
Right.
But as I'm looking at the, at this plan that's before us, do, I guess you have a proposed underground passageway to the house? That does, nothing like that exists now, is that correct?
Uh, it does, it does. That's already, that's already built.
Okay, so it would be updated, I guess that's why it's proposed? What does that mean? Or that's just old?
Well, this, this plan, Mr. McCullough, was, was prepared in January. So I'm assuming that the work was done sometime since January, is that, would that be correct, Diane?
Um, yeah, it was actually done prior to January, because this was updated permits. Uh, the original permits, I believe, were obtained in June of 2020, which had the, the tunnel. The, the garage never changed. I just built a tunnel connecting it to the, to the house.
So prior to, there was no tunnel?
Right, exactly.
So you would have to walk out to the sidewalk and then up the steps in order to access your house, is that correct?
Right, right.
And so now, because you have a tunnel, does that change the utilization of the garage as far as parking? Are you now parking more frequently inside the garage?
Um, I, I certainly can. I haven't been yet. The garage door was just put on and isn't connected yet to be able to open it. And the garage is, I have a minivan, because I have four kids. So it's a little tight opening doors. I have to let kids out. And then drive and, you know, scoot over to the side. So it's easier to park in the driveway, to be honest.
So, so thank you. So basically, I mean, you're asking for consideration of the possibility of having as many as three vehicles parked on the property. One inside the garage
Right.
and two outside of the garage, is that correct?
Yeah, yes, exactly.
And, and as part of, as part of your thinking around that, because I think you mentioned trying to back out of your driveway currently onto North Mountain is a big challenge.
Well, it isn't with the ma, wall moved over now, but it was in the beginning.
Okay, so, but if you, if you, if you add, if you don't put up that terrorist, that wall and, and terrorist area and have a third vehicle parked there, does that suggest that you might in turn be looking to expand the curb cut?
Um, no, I don't believe I will need to expand the curb cut. And like I said, this is just more of a spillover option. So if I had to move one car to be able to take the other one out, that's fine. So I wasn't looking to expand the curb cut and make more changes than were, than were necessary.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Harris, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, I don't, thanks.
Mr. Caulfield, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, not at this time, Chair, thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Viera, do you have any questions?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. I would like to ask Janice if you can please show me a picture of, of the, the retaining wall? Yes, that's it. That's it, so, question, there, that retaining wall was not there before, is that correct? And, and, and you installed this retaining wall after you purchased the property?
Yes, there was a retaining wall that existed, yes, right about there. I took that retaining wall down and it's, and put up a new retaining wall.
Yeah, and the, the, the retain, the new retaining wall that you put up, is that the one that was built without a permit, is that correct?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so I do have a concern with that. Was that new retaining wall designed by a professional or someone looked at it? Or it was just a contractor who, who built it?
Uh, no, my, my architect looked at it.
But he, so.
Obviously, we, we have, like I said, approved permit, so whatever we're finally gonna build there will be approved by the, will be inspected by the town.
Yeah, but my concern is that it was built. So my question again is, was it looked at by a professional in terms of drainage and soil capacity? And, you know, the, the structurally sound retaining wall, is that? That, so that's my.
Yes, my architect looked at it.
But he designed it? He looked at it, he designed it?
Well, honestly, what we did was just copy exactly what was there and just moved it over.
Yeah, what I'm trying to find out is if he, he signed the drawings for this retaining wall?
Yes, so the permits of January 21 were, were signed by an architect.
Okay.
Those are, those are approved permits. So while I, when I did the work, it wasn't approved, they are approved now. But what's approved is adding these terrorist walls. And that's what I'm here before you tonight to, to talk about.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, so now this is approved.
Okay, Ms. Mr. Moore, do you have any questions? Mr. Moore?
I, I. No questions at the moment.
I, I've, you're proposing to put in some arborvitae between the driveway and the sidewalk where, what I'll call the new space is being created. But you had indicated that with a prior retaining wall, you had difficulty seeing when you were backing out of the driveway. Wouldn't, since those arborvitae are much closer to the street than the prior retaining wall was, aren't they gonna even further impede your being able to look whose car is coming south Mount, uh, North Mountain?
I think that was a thought to make it more visually appealing to the, the neighbor.
I'm sure that's the reason, but I'm, you know, I think you're worsening what you were trying to correct when you removed the one retaining wall. Have you discussed that with anybody as to what your ability to see?
Uh, I I don't want to answer for, uh, the witness, Mr. Chairman, but, you know, our architect did look at that and agreed, because Janice raised that comment in her last memorandum. Uh, and, you know, again, we had provided that in an effort to screen the, um, the, the parking space, uh, from view, but uh, obviously, may have solved that problem, but created a different one, so I, you know, we're, we're eliminating that from the, from the plan and the architect would, our next witness will, would discuss that.
Okay, any other questions for members of the board? I think what we're gonna do, because of the difficulties we're having, will reserve questions and comments from members of the public until both witnesses have testified, so it hopefully will be a little easier for everyone to participate in one shot rather than at multiple opportunities, so, Mr. Tremble, I can want to call your next witness?
Yes, um, Jeffrey Lewis?
Mr. Lewis, are you present?
No.
Mr. Lewis, you're unmuted, but you have to turn on your microphone. So you're unmuted, you should be, should be able to hear, oh, wait, I see you're on here twice, okay, you know what? Uh, I, Mr. Lewis, I just made you a panelist. So I think now maybe we can hear your testimony. If you turn on your microphone. There you go. I think we, oh, I think we should be able to hear you now.
Okay, so now you can hear me.
All right, uh, let me mute everything.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Janice.
We can see you and hear you.
All right, Mr. Lewis, would you raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address, please.
My name is Jeffrey Lewis and my address is two seven seven Ridge Street in Newark, New Jersey, zero seven one zero four.
Mr. Lewis, would you raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
Yes, I do.
Okay, sure.
That's the double swearing in procedure. Uh, Mr. Lewis, I think you might have two audios going at one time, you want to get rid of one of them?
Mr. Lewis, would you
Okay. I, um, I just closed my computer, I'm on my phone now, actually, because the computer wasn't working, uh, can you hear me now?
Oh, Mr. Lewis?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I closed my computer, I'm just on my phone now, because the computer apparently wasn't going through. Um, so I guess we can go, right?
Okay, all right, Mr. Lewis, would you just, uh, provide the board with your educational background and professional qualifications, please?
Uh, sure, I graduated with a Bachelor of Architecture degree from NGIT in two thousand four. I got my, uh, license in the state of New Jersey for architecture in two thousand nine, and I have been practicing in, by myself, on my own, since two thousand and eleven. And my license is still, uh, active and in good standing.
Okay, and, um, okay, and you have a, um, you, you didn't personally prepare the plans that or that you're prepared to discuss tonight, is that right?
That's correct, uh, the drawings were done by Art Tech, uh, they're a firm that I've worked with for a very long time, and I've gone over the drawings with the project manager who designed them, and I'm pretty fluent in them.
Okay, uh, you're familiar with the plans, um, you, and have you also visited the property and familiar familiarize yourself with the property and the neighborhood?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and are you also, um, familiar with the, uh, provisions or sections of the Montclair zoning ordinance, uh, relevant to this application?
Yes, sir.
Um, okay, um, all right, would you, um, discuss the plans that are before the board, and I guess maybe you should go right to the revised plans that were submitted approximately ten days ago?
Right, and I think those are the ones that are up now, correct?
Um,
Yes.
Yes, I think so, yeah.
Okay, so, um, as was mentioned, this is a pretty unique situation here, where most of the homes uh, on the street have a driveway going to their rear yard. Uh, however, about sixty-five years ago, the Montclair zoning board decided that this was a unique site and approved a variance to put a garage in the front yard. Uh, this garage, as was mentioned, is built into the, into the hill of the, um, of the property, and it's buried with twelve inches of dirt. Uh, and then the, the driveway to that garage also had retaining walls on both sides. Uh, and so, as was mentioned, the retaining wall on the left, we left as is, the retaining wall on the right was removed while we were doing some repairs, uh, what happened is the, we were repairing the top row uh, over the garage, because again, we don't, we don't really do garages right underground, under like, with just twelve inches of dirt on top of them very often. So, uh, the masonry wasn't in great shape, so we had to replace, uh, a lot of the block. And while that was happening, the client decided to remove that wall, make it a little wider and extend, so we extended the garage wall about another ten feet over to the right, and then did a new stepped retaining wall up the side. And then what we're proposing now to kind of break that up a little bit is a four and a half foot tall planter. Uh, again, which will help just break up that nine foot, that over nine foot wall into two. Um, can you go to the next sheet? And we'll just go over the, um, I think it has plans and elevate, there's the, the section in elevation. Yes. Okay, so, so on the left, I'm sorry, on the phone, it's so weird seeing all this. Uh, on the left, there's a section through the garage, so you can see how the garage is buried down underneath the ground. And to the right, you see the front view of that garage, and I just want to go over a couple of the finishes here. Um, the main finish is going to be a smooth stucco finish, uh, and this is going to be a medium gray color, which will complement the new color of the house that is being painted. Um, the walls all have two inch cast stone caps on them. The planter, uh, has a natural stone finish. And the garage door is a wood door and has recessed panels in the top row of, uh, glass panes. Uh, as was mentioned, we were proposing, uh, a few shrubs in the front, however, um, the planner's report actually mentioned exactly what, uh, the board member mentioned, that they were probably not a great idea as far as sightlines. Uh, we would be happy to either get rid of them or just propose something much smaller and low lying, I mean, the arbor by these grow very big and they're, they're made to, to shield, we could, uh, plant something much smaller, that's really just decorative, a couple of feet tall. Um, and then, uh, lastly, I just want to mention, uh, there are three variances that we are asking for, one is for an accessory use in the front yard, which is the garage, which is in existing use. We are expanding that wall out, so that's considered expanding the garage. Uh, the second is again the retaining wall height, which is determined exactly by the height of the garage, we're not going any taller than that existing garage wall, but that existing garage is nine foot six tall, so that's what the retaining wall needs to be as well. And then, of course, the third is for the front yard parking. Um,
Well, aren't there variances relating to the, um, um, the wall on the right side? The new wall on the right side of the, of this area?
That's the, the retaining wall height, yes. That's the, the nine and a half foot high section at the back, so it's, it's a little too tall, that, that retaining wall, that's correct.
Okay. Um, just so we're, I just want to make sure we're discussing the, the same wall, we're not talking about the wall, the new wall that aligns with the garage door, but the wall on the right side.
The wall, that's right, because we did break up the wall on the back, but the wall on the right is over nine and a half feet tall.
Okay, and
Yes, am I wrong there?
If, if, yeah, I, I agree.
Question, that's related to height, are, you're required to put a fence at the top of the wall. You had that on your building plan, right, at three
Yeah, so, so we can definitely, we can definitely discuss that, um.
Because in the measurement of height, it's really that's, you have to measure the, the height of the wall and the reta- and the fence on top, which is another three feet.
Right, well, we did actually remove the fence from this plan. Uh, there's not a fence there now, there wasn't a fence there for the past sixty-five years.
Building department's gonna require you to put a fence up. And when you, when you measure height, height is measured the wall plus the fence.
So then to comply, we can set back that fence three feet, I think you'd have to do, correct?
Yes, you can do that.
We can do that, and it's, it's a little strange, because then you have that little three foot section, and we can't really plant anything big there, because we only have a little bit of soil above the garage. Um, so it, and maybe we can do like a nice flower bed or something in front. Um, but we were, we were planning, we were hoping to not do the fence, but I think you might be right, that the, the building department might not love that.
Absolutely, have to have a fence.
But if we do, if we do, it will definitely be set back, it would definitely be set back, so it wouldn't increase the height of the wall, because we understand that, that's getting too high.
All right, just wanted to point that out.
Right, we had tried to eliminate that, but I guess the best way, the really, the only way to eliminate it is to set the, the fence back as opposed to
And if, if you've set the fence back, then the issue goes away, I think, okay.
Um, one other, um, point with regarding the retaining wall height, just so, um, we're clear, um, the, um, terrorist wall that would remain, you know, on the rear, um, that's gonna be four and a half feet high, correct?
That's right, we were breaking it up into four and a half foot sections.
Okay, but, um, isn't the s- the, um, setback, or the distance between the, uh, the terrorist retaining walls, um, that you're proposing is three feet, is that right?
That's, yeah, it's only a three foot deep, uh, terrace, so it doesn't actually meet the requirement for the terrace, which again, we are asking for the variance for a nine foot six high wall.
Make sure it was clear that we would need a variance for that, because the ordinance would require four, four feet distance between the two walls and, and we're only showing three feet, and I'm assuming the reason for that would be to allow room for the car, the parked
Right, we did, we did that to provide for a better parking spot, that's right. But we are, we are asking for the nine foot six for the, the overall wall height, which I think would cover both of them, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Um, and, um, was there an additional plan prepared, um, in response to the memo from Ms. Tally that was issued last week after we had submitted the revised plans that we're looking at now? She, she raised a question about the ability of whether there was enough room for cars to park.
Right, and we did, we did update, we did update our plans to show, um, if you could see right on the sheet that's open now, to show, uh, parking, the two, all the parking spaces, and then how a car would get into that third space.
Okay.
And I think this plan also does show the dimension of that space, which is about, it's a little more than seventeen and a half feet deep at the smallest part.
Good.
So, so again, a typical, the standard for a parking space would be eighteen, so we are a tiny bit short, again, just at the edge there, but uh, at about halfway through that spot, we are over eighteen feet easily.
All right, so is it your, you know, opinion that there would be adequate room, you know, to park a vehicle in that spot if the board were to approve the variance?
Yes, I mean, you're not gonna park your F-150 there, but any, any medium sized, average sized car will fit there very easily.
Okay. And, um, did your, Mr., um, um, I forget the architect's name, apologize, I know him, Ms. Mariano, um, prepare a schematic drawing, you know, kind of depicting what this would look like, um, if the application was approved and the, you know, the project was completed, according to
Yeah, the, the render, the schematic render, the little sketch you did, yes.
Can you pull that up, Janice?
All right, let's see.
There it is.
Here, it's actually on my screen.
Yeah, it's right there.
It's right there.
Okay, we'll, we'll mark that as a four?
So again, ju- just identify that, if you would, for the record, please.
Oh, you told me, I'm sorry.
Yes, you.
Okay, so yeah, so, so this is, this is a sketch showing, uh, what we would be proposing. Uh, what we see is the existing wall
I'm listening to it.
To the left, the existing wall on the back, or for the garage itself.
I didn't go in, because I'm looking
Then the two, the two new retaining walls, as well as the landscape block, um, I'm sorry, not landscape block, but the, um, stone wall for the, um, for the planter.
Um, Mr. Viera, so it seems to me that what it looks like here is you're gonna have everything paved from the retaining wall to the retaining wall to the sidewalk, this is all gonna be paved? Because
Yeah, this is actually wrong in that regard, we are proposing
My issue is the property line, you're, the retaining wall actually goes over the, the property line? And I'm concerned that a lot of this parking will actually be on the, if this is just parking, it's gonna be on township property.
Right, if you bring up, if you bring up the, back, go back to the plan, I can clear that up, this is drawn, this, this sketch is a little not correct in that regard. And I will say regarding the little nubs that are sticking out into the city's property, it's probably a foot or two, we could remove those if absolutely necessary. Uh, if you look at the old pictures, they just have a pile of rocks there instead of, instead of retaining wall, so it was, it was always kind of like that, or it has been for a long time, but it was just more haphazard, we do have the old picture that shows that. Uh, but if you see in this plan here, if you zoom in a little closer, you can see that where the plantings were in the front is, is taking up, I don't know if it's on this one or the other one?
Um.
No, not this one, this is the old, it's the, the plan that we submitted now.
Right.
Right, so you can see that the space that's in between the, the sidewalk and our property is actually taken up by those, where those three plantings are? The three, the three shoves we were talking about?
What I'm concerned, yeah, is, is it's, you show this as landscaping, if it's not landscaping, it's grass.
Well, what we can do is, we can, we can do a nice little curb around it and do a nice planted area with something, again, just lower, not an arbor by the that's gonna be six feet tall.
Okay.
Um, I don't think I have any further questions from Mr. Lewis.
And that's, that's your last witness?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, for members of the public, we're going to unmute you, um, if there's anyone who either has questions of either of the witnesses or
Oh, yeah, we haven't asked question, we haven't asked questions on this one.
Sorry, I'm just trying to get down tonight, okay? Defy you, do you have any questions?
I do. I thought I heard the applicant saying she has a big van. The car that's shown there that shows this turning radius going in looks like a mini minivan.
Right.
So if the applicant's got her a big van parked in that spot, you can't even make the turn that are being suggested by this sketch of, of a vehicle turning in.
Um, if I
That means, that means this car is shorter than a standard car.
Um.
That it's shown there.
The, I would be parking in the garage or behind the garage with the bigger car. Um, the, what I sort of consider the spillover spot would be for one of my teenagers, which would be in a much smaller car.
Um, okay, I guess, I don't, I, I don't know how we control, I, I, okay, that's fine, that answers the question. I don't know how you control this at all. Once you put the fence in the back, the fence also has to wrap around the side until it gets down to four foot, so it's not just the fence in back, it's a fence coming down the side of the hill next to that wall until it gets higher, even if you were to do that.
Right.
It's not just in the back, to me, this is, this is a nightmare waiting to happen, I, I, I'm very concerned about this. I don't think it works. I think you're, you're trying to stuff a whole bunch of things into space that doesn't exist. Um,
If I may, a lot of this was already existing and did not have a fence when I purchased the house.
That's, that's immaterial, that's an old, that's based on old laws or whatever, you couldn't get the permit now without a fence. We're talking about now and what's legal and what's safe.
I'm, I'm perfectly fine with putting, I'm perfectly fine with putting a fence.
I understand that, I don't understand how the turning is gonna work. This turning, you're showing a car, your whole dimension there is seventeen foot, you're showing a car that's roughly three or four foot shorter than that, so you're talking about a fourteen foot car. There aren't that many fourteen foot cars around. Three or four foot shorter than that. So you talk about a fourteen foot car. There aren't that many fourteen foot cars around. I don't care who's driving them. This. I think this is. A serious problem. Already. And trying to put another car in there makes it even worse. So I, 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 I really don't. Other than the desire to have the space for three vehicles, which is not. Something. As I said, we have situations where you can't even park one vehicle on a person's property. Uh, it, it just. From my perspective, it doesn't work. And I think there are some real dangers here and safety issues that, that I couldn't support. Despite all the arguments being made, but we can hear from other people. I, I think this is a problem.
And Mr. Moore, do you have any questions? Mr. Moore?
Mr. Church, do you have any? I have no questions.
Hey, Mr. Church, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Mr. McCullough, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Um, Ms. Harris, do you have any questions?
Um, yes. Um, I think I'm a little confused about the retaining wall at the back. Um. When the applicant previously testified, um, and we were looking at plans on the screen, there was no retaining wall, or there was a retaining wall that was approved. But was not built. Is this one, was this one just designed to kind of? You know, appease um, the uh, the building department because that was what was initially approved? Or I'm not sure what this retaining wall, uh, this planter wall is doing here.
The, the planter is basically there just to break up that nine and a half, that nine foot, nine and a half foot wall into two pieces just to um. Just bring us more in compliance with what is allowed in the city, which is um, four and a half foot high retaining walls with steps. So it was more of a decorative element than anything else.
Okay. And then I guess if this app, this um. Variance is not approved allowing this um, other parking space, what is the plan for this area?
Um, I, I would say, I think we talked and spoke about this. We would go probably back to the older plan like this where we would have uh, more planters. And it would only be one parking space, but it would just be a little wider. Um, and that would be, you know, pending approval by the building department, of course.
It's already been approved by the building department and, you know, Ms. Russell indicated that if this application is denied, then she will build what you're looking at now, which has already been reviewed and approved by, by the building department. So.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Viera, do you have any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and I don't have any questions. I'll try again. Are, if there are any members of the public who either have questions of either of the witnesses or any. Testimony comments, statements about the application, please indicate that and we'll do you one by one. Um. And if you're not the first call, then keep yourself muted until it's the next person's turn. Janice, do you want to unmute everybody?
Hold on, uh. All right, everybody is unmuted. Who's here? So if anybody has, you have to turn on your um, you have to turn on your microphone if you want to ask questions or make comments. I know we have people here. But you have to turn on your microphone because I know that there is residents who have comments. Let's see, we have questions. Vicki Lockhart, how do you turn on your microphone? Okay, Ms. Lockhart. Let me see if. And, and can you try, Ms. Lockhart, can you try to um, turn on your microphone?
It might be helpful to share your screen to show them.
All right, can you see this? Do you see the attendee list? I'm checking everybody. Okay. And now you're unmuted. All right. So now you're unmuted. So Ms. Lockhart, I think what you see, you see how some of these.
We can't see your screen, Janice.
Hmm? Do you see them?
No, we only see the uh, drawing.
Okay, I shared my screen, but you can't. All right, so I have it, you're unmuted. I can see like Mr., I could see some of you like uh. Let me try one at a time. All right, so this is the call in user. Uh, do you have comments? Nine one seven. Five two eight, you're unmuted. Caller number eight.
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, Colin, you're. Nine seven three seven four four, I've unmuted you. You have a comment or a question?
No.
Okay. So Ms. Lockhart, I've, I've clicked on you. You have to turn on your microphone. I don't, are you participating by your computer? I'm gonna try and unmute everybody. I've unmuted everybody.
The unmuting is not allowing people on the computers to talk.
Speaking right now.
Sorry about that.
Right, well, obviously what you, I've unmuted you. I don't know who, who you are. All right, Barry, okay, we have somebody, a, a member of the public who's trying to call Mr. Denistrian, Denistrian. Um. You know, maybe for, for tonight, Bill, how about, I know there's some people who want to speak. If I try to make them panelists, at least for this, for this part, and then. So that maybe they can speak if I make them a panelist?
Why, why don't you do it in like groups of five or something? So the system doesn't get overwhelmed?
So Ms. Um, Ms. Lockhart, I just made you a panelist, so you should be able to unmute yourself. And Mr. Denistrian, I know he wants to speak. Made him a panelist as well. So again, Ms. Lockhart, if you, your microphone is not turned on. And Mr. Denistrian, your microphone is not turned on, but if you turn it on, we'll be able to hear you.
There, there should be a microphone at the bottom of your screen that, that you can click on. And it'll either mute you or unmute you. Should be towards the center of the bottom of the screen.
And other members, for those of you who want to call in, the phone number is, it should be on this TV thirty-four. The phone number is. Yeah, I hear you.
Hi, thank you for your patience. We really appreciate it.
Is this Ms. Lockhart?
Hi, yeah, this is Vicki Lockhart and.
Okay, would you do me a favor? Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
Yes.
And would you state your name and address, please?
My name is Vicki Lockhart. I live at two sixty-six North Mountain Avenue.
Okay, if you have a question or a comment, this is your opportunity to do so.
Thank you. Um, we have a, we have a handful of questions about the application, just for clarity. Um, in August, we understood that. The application was um, postponed for architect plans. And we were wondering what, where the architect plans are in regards to. Um, thinking about water, controlling the water and with the raised. Um, because the retaining wall of the garage was raised as a neighboring uh, property. The crowning of the property at two sixty-eight flows water to mine and during heavier rains, it floods down. The front of our walk.
Is this the wall you're confr- concerned uh, talking about? If you look on, if you see in the computer, is this it?
Um, yes. So that's the original, when we purchased the home, um. Less than a year prior to Ms. Russell, the. This, this um, driveway was not an exciting, um. Uh, you know, it wasn't an exciting thing for us, but because it, it was also. It was also um, fairly hidden, right? And so this structure was created. And grew without permit and without variance. And so the original structure. Um, at, the contractors built it higher. So the nineteen fifty-seven. Variance said that it can be nine feet tall, but the, the architects added some bricks to the top of that and then. So now it's six feet taller and then the ground on top of that for planting. So there's no under, there, there's no plan. And so when I was looking at all the, um, one of the things that hasn't been discussed is all of the. The planting and some of the landscaping to think about with this raised elevation, what happens for the flow of water? And then if the original, if an, if a variance, if originally approved variance has been altered in any way. My understanding is that everything. Has to meet current code, including this raised, um, this raised bricks and then also the tunnel leading to the back of the house. There's way less permeable. Uh, footage for like, where's this water gonna go? And there have been floods on the streets during the heavy rains. Um, the sewage smell, the standing water in the driveway that lasted for five months and with every rain, it needs to be pumped. It's an attractive nuisance where kids are daring each other to go in. Um. And the. Oh, the, the clogged, uh, I mean, even in this image that's currently on screen, you can see all of the silt that's lined up on the streets. The drain um, is, is often clogged and needs to be addressed because of the flooding on the street. And so a number of neighbors. I sent some documents in earlier that collected. Comments from text threads, the dog walkers, the neighbors, the um, people in the book club. Et cetera, just commenting on this structure and the presumption that this is gonna be built and approved. And I have documentation that goes, also goes back to Richard Charian. Um, prior to before this wall even being built. And they're like, well, if it's not approved, it just comes down. If it's not approved, it just comes down. And this has been going on for over a year and a half. I have emails, I have documentation that goes way, way, way back. Neighbors have been calling in concerns about the safety of this issue of, of this. Um. Police Health Department have been called and. The fact that, the fact that this structure. Was um, the timeline, I, I would have to say is a little bit confusing, not only between the architect and the representing lawyer. As they're trying to go back and forth, I think the, the continued plans that are presented. Create, create conflict. It creates confusion. And I have been living that door and watching this unfold. Um, and some of the, the notes about this being some township property. Um, the safety of if a car is parked there because it, there's also an intention. I, I also think it's a little bit conflicting to say that there wasn't originally an intention. Um, she, she just wanted to open her car door. Which would maybe happen at like by three feet, right? Like to open a car door, but if you're gonna widen it to ten feet, there's clearly an intention. To have another car parked there. Also. There was a request to widen the apron at one time. Which was denied. And so there's a lot conflicting information. And only I, I would say small snippets of it are presented. This evening.
Okay.
Um, so I, I, I guess I should comment on this. Um, the garage was never raised. The garage was existing. Um, what you're speaking about was the top layer of, I don't know, bricks or cement block. That were completely degraded and they had to be replaced. Um, because it was not, it, they were literally disintegrating. Um, so nothing in the garage was raised. Um, what has been done since the summer is an engineer plan for um, grading and drainage. Um, which will be implemented. Um, which is part of resolving the water issue with the driveway. But until I know what needs to be built in the driveway, I can't put down the asphalt. So I can't fix the drainage issue. Um, so that will all be, will all be done. Um. And I'm trying to think of other things that you brought up. I never asked to widen the apron. Um, that was never my intention. All I'm seeking here right now is, like I said, I have two teenage children. Is like just spillover parking that if both of them have two cars. Um, that they can, you know, they can come home. Um, and. I don't remember what, what else that you, um, that you brought up, but a lot of the, you know. The landscaping just hasn't been done anywhere on the, on the property.
So we just, we want to make a couple of quick parliamentary issues here. So.
Hold on a second. Hold on a second. First of all, let's, hold on. Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending for the board?
I do.
State your name and address, please.
Anthony Accurso, two five three North Mountain Avenue, right across the street. We were trying to log in, um, and we, we can't get um. Microphone access as attendees. It's a technical glitch, but you're asking if people have comments and we weren't able to comment. So.
Well, you, you can, you're, you now have the ability to comment.
Yeah, well, because we, we ran across the street. But so our, our point is there may be people who are trying to comment but cannot. So.
What we're doing is we're inviting, we're gonna invite, we're gonna make each member of the public a participant of, of. So that they'll be able to. They won't just be attendees anymore. So we're bringing them in one by one to, so everyone will have an opportunity to speak.
That, that's totally fine. But just, you know, given that we, we, we couldn't be franchised by our computers, I just ran across the street because Vicki had been made a panelist. So.
Really?
House here too. I don't know if you want to swear in.
Um, I'm Barry.
Well, you, why don't you go first? We just swore you in. Go ahead.
All right.
So just, just briefly, um, the, the main concern that we noticed is there is sometimes standing water. In, in the space. The garage is quite pitched. And we're, we're concerned about the hygiene in that. Um, you know, particularly after the two large storms we had. But even on, sometimes on just regular storms, like we're curious, as was brought up by the board earlier. Um, whether, whether water mitigation was discussed as part of the initial retaining wall construction. That's our primary concern.
Um, so just a comment about that. There was standing water when I bought the, the property. So this was always an, an issue. Well, I understand you're shaking your head, but this was my.
Years, so it's inaccurate.
I, I understand that, but.
Let's let Ms. Russell speak and then that other person will also have an opportunity to speak.
So when I bought the property, water would collect there. I don't know if the drain was undersized or was getting. I don't know if the drain was undersized or was getting clogged. Um, but as I said, my intention is not to have standing water there. Obviously, I park there, that is the only parking. Um, it, it has to be, um, you know, asphalt has to be put down. Um, but I don't know in terms of what's gonna be approved in terms of the walls to be able to do that. Um, the, the pitch is sort of the pitch because it comes from the street. And I understand that I can't change that. Um, so what I've discussed and what was in the engineer's plan is just to make a much bigger drain, um, to remove the water. But the drain can't be redone until the asphalt is done.
Give, give your name and address.
Just where you went first, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address, please.
My name is Barry Denestrian, I am at two sixty-four North Mountain Avenue. Um, I've lived in my home since two thousand and five. I know what this property looked like before Ms. Russell purchased it. I know the impact it had on the street, which was none at that time. I have three children that live in my home, including um two that don't drive. They ride bikes, they ride scooters, they walk dogs. Um, on multiple occasions, they've had to stop because of fear of being run over from a car that may be pulling in or out of this driveway as it now exists. Um, I wanna call out several inaccuracies in what has been discussed this evening. Um, and my fear is that in granting the variance, the board will be, in particular, rewarding poor behavior and setting a terrible precedent for um homeownership going forward. Um, I've sat now on these meetings several, on several occasions due to adjournments, and I've heard front area parking denied, and I think it should be denied again tonight. Um, initially, I'd like to make note of the fact that on several occasions, both the architect and Ms. Russell have noted that the uh retaining wall was moved a bit or moved slightly. It was moved ten feet. Um, as anyone on this board knows, ten feet is significant in this town. Ten feet of soil that's pulled out from a yard is significant when we're talking about drainage and permeation. I personally have sent in videos of water, not just standing, because that exists, but water pouring out of holes in the property because it has nowhere to go. Those were submitted um to, is it Mr. Graham? Okay, so after each rain, so, so ten feet is significant. Ten feet is also significant because as you see in the photograph that's up right now, that large white patch, that's all an extension that was put on that wall without a permit. I want to reinforce this. This was put on without a permit over a weekend, just as the enormous extension was put on the back of the house over a weekend. This was put on without a permit. The fact that a permit was or was not later granted is unclear, given the fact that multiple plans have been submitted. It's unclear to everybody sitting on this call, including the architect, what plan controls and what we're looking at at any given time and what variants we might be discussing, because the conflicts that are created by the multiple plans have not only confused the public, but they've clearly confused the board. And you all know your jobs, you're doing your jobs well, and I appreciate particularly Mr. Fleischer's questions. This wall is a danger, it's a hazard, it's a hazard to my children as they're walking back and forth and cars cannot see pulling out. It's a danger to the fact that Ms. Russell would like, it's not an extra space. She has two spaces, it is a third space. And in trying to put a car in a third space where there is no apron, it necessitates either pulling a car out sideways without a proper sightline or depth perception or already pulling out a car, which really doesn't serve her purpose in trying to get an extra spot. She could have done that in the first place by only having two spots and having to pull one car out in order to get a second car out. In addition, I'd like to note, if it's not clear on the record, that Ms. Russell is a Realtor in town. Ms. Russell knows the rules of this town, she understands how permits work. She flips homes as, as part of her business. So we're not talking a babe in the woods in terms of homeownership. We're speaking about someone who's clearly educated, who knows her business and knew when in her construction company that has been here for nearly eighteen months was building this wall over a weekend without a permit. This isn't like, oops, I did it, I didn't know I didn't need a permit. Anybody, anybody, Realtor, flipper, person on the street would know that you would require a permit, you would require an inspection, you would require an architect in order to move a wall ten feet in the front of your home. In addition, there is absolutely no answer for the fact that on multiple occasions, the town has, I assume, fined. The town has issued stop work orders, there has been neglect of this property. We have called the town as neighbors multiple times because of debris in this driveway, equipment. There had been no restroom on the property. So Ms. Russell's workers were urinating in this driveway and in this, and defecating inside of this garage. And then when it rained, it was pooling in this driveway. When we talk about, well, we can't change, you know, the township property and this is why the water flows this way, water cannot flow uphill. So no amount of drainage is going to correct the situation as it exists now without raising the height of the driveway. In addition, having lived here for fifteen years and having sixteen years and having kids trick or treat from home to home to home, I can attest to the fact that my children never used to have to climb uphill to go between the property that's next door to Ms. Russell's and Ms. Russell's property. So while the height of the, of the garage may technically not have been lifted, which I, I think it's been lifted at least six inches as far as we know, the amount of soil that's then been added on top of it is significant. We are, we are talking about an incredible height that is dangerous. It's dangerous to mailmen, it's dangerous to kids who tend to run into this yard because it's an attractive nuisance, and it's also just unsightly. So as much as Ms. Russell seemed to think that the property was dilapidated before, it remains so. And I understand that part of that is because we're, we're waiting to find out whether she can move forward with permits. No landscaping is going to fix this. No amount of arbivitum or shrubbery or moss is going to fix the fact that a new ten-foot large structure was installed without a permit on a property that is so close to the road that anybody walking from one house to the next, riding a bike on the side, next to the sidewalk, walking a dog shouldn't fear that a car might pull out and hit them. Um, lastly, as you can see in this particular photograph, there is a driveway and there is a sidewalk. I wanna note for the record that behind that sidewalk is where this proposed parking spot, an additional four-foot retaining wall will sit. So I'd love, I'd love if the board wanted to take a field trip and come and see this property in, in real life, because the depth there is so short that Mr. Fleischer is right. You would have to put a very small car there, which would defeat the purpose entirely of having this existing structure extended another ten feet. That's what I've got, thank you.
So just also to clarify, because, um, thank you. Uh, to clarify, the wall that was added to the right, facing the screen, the wall, the retaining wall that was added without the permit, the nine-foot-six-inch structure is, is without any inspection, what's behind it? What's the integrity of that wall? Without any, without any engineering plan on it? Is this wall gonna crumble when it's wet? Who's gonna be in charge of this? We've emailed the town about this for over a year and this has not been inspected, there are no rocks piled behind it. There's no sense of like, the wall's painted with the black tar to protect it. Like, these walls are ready to crumble, right? So dilapidated, and then there are a whole bunch of pictures that are in the application and were in the application and maybe pulled out earlier. But the wall that was rebuilt to the right is not exactly the same because it doesn't even have the little holes for drainage as like the original wall was. The original wall had all the little holes along it, as does the wall to the left that borders the greenhouse. Um, all the little drainage walls, it is not built exactly the same at all. And who, so who's gonna be in charge of these walls? Because this is, this is really messy, there's no inspection, who's in charge? Who's accountable for this? Where, who's willing to sign off on this with their name, their license? And my understanding is, from speaking with people in town, is that like lawyers just have to be involved. And potentially, depending on this application, is like, maybe as neighbors, we request postponement on this application to have a complete set of drafts. All, like, we're just gonna look at this snapshot in a quick little view from um the lawyer representing Ms. Russell is like, well, this is, you know, here's a, a stamped date, but this is just a piece of a complete file. And there, we went back and forth and back and forth and back and forth between a handful of applications. And it's frankly, it's quite confusing and we're just gonna go back to the one that was already dated and approved, but like, I'm not sure anybody can even speak to what that was because even when I go back to the original ones, the language back and forth on the original one is misleading. And all of this driveway stuff came in after the house was built. So in terms of the lot size, which was not discussed at all, the whole house addition went on, the size of the house was doubled on a, on an acreage of not even like two tenths of an acre. And now we have this like huge parking lot in the front yard, which is fifty-five feet wide. Something is just not making sense. It's way overbuilt for the property. And they paid a million dollars to live next door to this, she paid five hundred thousand dollars and way overbuilt. And now we live next to like this huge structure. The drainage is a mess, the property is way overbuilt. And I think the square footage of the property between the house itself, the driveway, and then the tunnel that was built is like, where's the permeable? Like, where's all this drainage, where's all this water gonna go? Because we also have, it's, it's a mess because there's also drainage has to be addressed because there are ongoing issues that are civil that don't, that are not gonna be a part of the board, but I'm telling you, it's a huge problem.
And as, as I've indicated, I've hired an engineer to do a drainage and grading plan, which will be, which will be done.
So how can this be?
Maybe we should have that be.
Okay. Okay, are there, Jared?
And, Jared, if you wanna see if there are other members of the public who have any comments or questions?
Yes. Um. Mr. Hand, do you have any comments or questions on this application?
Just a, a quick question.
Hold on, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
You're talking to Ms. Anthony Akerso, I swear to tell the truth, two five-three across the street.
Oh, wait, you're, who, who's speaking? Is this An- Anthony Hand?
Already sworn, I, but, so.
Okay.
There's a quick question that we have. Uh, we're reading from the notice of hearing, board of adjustment. We just, we highlighted one line which says the applicant also requests any other variances that are required. We just wanna confirm, like, are there other variances other than those that have already been discussed?
Okay, but the all land use lawyers, which I am for better or worse one, will put that in. If there are other variances that come up, they will have to be specifically mentioned and discussed as part of the application. It would not be done silently, they would have to say, you know, sometimes the board requires uh a change that requires a variance like we did with the earlier application, moving the trash enclosure, which created additional variances to cover that. But that'll be, if there's anything else they want or need or result of actions from us, that'll be very clear on the record and you would have an opportunity to comment on that. Everything that's a variance has already been discussed, there's nothing new that's gonna come up at this point.
Okay, I have A. Williams, do you have any comments? I have Brian Miles, do you have any comments? You need, either one of you, you need to turn on your microphone. Jake Modesto, do you have any comments? I've made you a panelist. If you do, you have to turn on your microphone. Okay. Mr. Lewis?
That's me.
He's our witness, Jen.
Yeah, we're okay.
That's right, I got, all right, how about Joyanne, Joyanne Shimizu? Do you have any comments? Mariano Paliza, do you have any comments? Laura Haynes, do you have any comments? I've made you all panelists, if you do, turn on your microphone. All right. Sima Mundra, do you have any comments? I've made you a panelist. If so, please turn on your microphone. I guess not. I think that's it.
Um, I'm gonna give one last, if, you know, if anyone, member of the public who has not spoken has any comments, said some of you weren't, just weren't able to turn on your microphone, if you could do the raise hand function or turn on your microphone, uh, we'll hear you now, otherwise we'll close that portion of the meeting.
Laura Haynes, I see that you've got your, your hand raised. I made you a panelist, Ms. Haynes. So if you want, turn on your microphone, we'll be able to hear you, cuz you're a panelist now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address, please.
Laura Haynes, two fifty-one North Mountain Avenue, Montclair, New Jersey, zero seven zero four three. Um, my main concern with regards to the construction of this property has been the permeable surface that has been taken away from the overall lot by the extension of the house itself and the removal of some of the dirt in that main driveway area. So with the torrential rains that we have been seeing and based on the potential climate change that we're gonna be seeing going forward, we often see the drain, the water coming through across the street to the drain in front of my driveway and down the driveway. And unfortunately, we're starting to see some water into my basement. And I have been at this house for thirteen years and this is the first time I'm getting that. So whether it's climate change, whether it's the permeable surface that it's no longer there absorbing, I don't think, uh, unfortunately landscaping is gonna be able to absorb the, all, all this water that was used to be before absorbed in a, in a much larger lot. So whether a study has been conducted or they, they had, they conducted that before they drafted the plans, I'm not quite sure. But there has been a change on the footprint of that house. And it is impacting the neighborhood, Anthony's house next to mine, my, my own, and definitely Vicki's. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who haven't managed to talk, who want to talk? Um, do something to indicate um that you. Do something to indicate that you want to, and we'll give you your chance.
I think, I think I've gotten everybody who was, who's here.
I just wanna make sure, and, okay. Mr. Trembleak, do you, are you, you just wanna sum up, or do you wanna do anything further with your witnesses?
No, I, I'll, I'll just sum up very briefly, Mr. Chairman.
Let, let me, before we do that, cuz it's gonna be 15 minutes before we discuss and vote, do you and Mr. Letizia, we're obviously not reaching your applications tonight, why don't we deal with that now, so we can?
Sure.
All right, so there's two other applications, we only have.
There's three, three others, I'm willing to do, we have the single family on Upper Mountain.
Right.
Which I think we can do quickly. I, it's just the Watchon Plaza property and.
And the Bank of America.
Bank of America, which.
It's a sign.
I just don't see us getting done at a reasonable hour.
So what we can do is, we can postpone those applications to November 17th. Okay? But I, I do wanna say to the, to this Board of Adjustment, we have a.
Honestly, backlog, I'm.
And I wanna throw out, I know we had two, we, we couldn't have the second meeting in October because of scheduling. Is there any chance that we could schedule a special meeting between, you know, now and the end of the year to get through all these applications?
I mean, just in terms of notice, I think it's gonna be hard to do it before the November meeting. Why don't, why don't you circulate something, you know, after the meeting and ask the board members what, you know?
Well, maybe what we could, is we could, we could continue these applications for November 17th, and I have a lot of, and maybe I could come up with a special date for all of the residential applications, and we could get them all done at, at another meeting. And I'll, I'll handle that after the meeting, but for tonight, the next meeting is November 17th. So the two applications we're not gonna hear, which are, Bank of America at 560 Valley Road and 17 Watchon Plaza at, at 17 Watchon Plaza, will be carried to the November 17th meeting date.
Janice, do we need extensions on either one of those applications?
Let me check my candidate lists here.
And Mr. Trembleak, while you're at it, I guess you'll grant us an extension to that November 17th meeting for the 17 Watchon Plaza application?
Yes, we, we consent to that, we consent to any necessary extension. My only question for Janice would be, would the, would we ma- maintain our place in line, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, so that on November 17th, the Bank of America application will be heard first, and we would be second?
I can't guarantee that.
Okay.
There's, there's two. That, that's something, you know, with the board, Mr. Chairman, I don't know, do you wanna?
Well, I, I don't know that we need to get, let's, with that request is in there, we've got an extension on 17 Watchon, do we need an extension on 560 Valley Road?
Yes.
And is the, is the attorney for the applicant present?
Mr. Letizia is here, I can make him, I just, Mr. Letizia, I made you a panelist. Are you there? I mean, I need to turn your microphone on. Uh, ah, there we go. All right, Mr. Letizia. I might be butchering your name.
Hi, no, that's very good, Janice, thank you. Good evening, members of the board, Tom Letizia, representing Bank of America. If you need an extension to November 17th, I, on behalf of the applicant, grant that extension.
Okay, thank you very much, Janice, I think the most, let's, let's just announce that those two applications are carried to November 17th, at 7:30 PM, that's gonna be a virtual meeting with the sign and information on the borough's website, the township's website, and that there'll be no further notice, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and those, those are the applications for 17 Watchon Plaza LLC for property at 17 Watchon Plaza, and the Bank of America National Association for Property at 560 Valley Road. So, members of the public interested in those, we'll see, see you virtually on November 17th.
Okay, thank you very much, have a good rest of the evening.
But sure, that's how I'll describe it, but we'll do, Mr. Trembleak, you wanna sum up?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be very brief, Mr. Chairman, cuz it, it's late, and, you know, we appreciate the board's time in hearing this application. I mean, you know, the neighbors have raised a lot of issues about a lot of things, many of which have nothing to do with the variance that we're seeking tonight, and we're basically seeking variance relief, you know, to allow an additional parking place in the front yard. And as I said at the beginning, and I'll say it again, I know the board has a reluctance to grant those variances, and I understand why. However, we thought this was a somewhat unique situation where, you know, this work is being done, there's a need for an additional space, there's no other possible place to, to put a parking place. We understand that, you know, that necessitates, you know, several variances, including the retaining height. If the board feels this is not an appropriate application for a front yard parking variance, so be it, and we will then just proceed, as Ms. Russell said earlier, to complete the plans in accordance with the plan we're looking at on the screen right now, which has already been approved by the building department. So, again, we would ask for the variance relief, I think we presented sufficient justification, but leave that obviously in, in your hands to decide, so thank you again for your time.
Mr. Sullivan, I have a question.
Fire away.
This plan that was approved in January treated the already-built retaining wall as an existing condition. Do we know if that retaining wall was engineered? Was it ever approved by?
Okay, that, the process before the building department is not in front of us, okay? We don't know what that was, it's not an issue before us. What is in front of you is the application for the parking space, the additional parking space, which is in effect, a third space if you count the garage space, and the, and the associated variances. What, what was before the building department and what they reviewed is not in front of us. So what, your role is to review what is in front of you on this narrow issue.
All right, I understand, but I have no reason, I'm sorry, I have no reason to believe that that wall was necessarily safe, because as described, at least by a neighbor, I've never seen a retaining wall that high that doesn't have drainage at the bottom and other things. So I, to approve anything here, for me, is a serious concern, a serious safety concern, and a serious life and limb concern. And I understand the limits of my role, and I understand the limits of our role, but I have a serious problem if that is an unsafe wall, and it was treated as if it was an existing condition.
Okay, that, your concern has now been communicated to the planning department, who will reiterate your concerns to the building department.
Okay, we'll start.
Sorry, Chair, can I ask a question to Michael or Janice? Does the building department, can they, do they have the jurisdiction to have walls taken down, or like, things, like, can they make those decisions, or it has to be up to the zoning board to do that? I'm just.
No, it's not up to the zoning, it's, it, if, the, the, an application for a building permit is reviewed by the building department, and if it's deemed appropriate, they issue the permit. And we don't know what the record was in front of them. Our concerns are going to be conveyed to the building department, but again, our scope of review is the narrow application for that additional parking space and the associated variances.
Got you, I just, one quick thing on that, but the building department does have jurisdiction to remove things, right? Just from my own understanding.
They can revoke permits if plans aren't followed, or, or other safety issues, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I also have a question for Mr. Sullivan. So I, I, when, when I read the planning memo, I also understood that we're also approving a variance for the retaining wall because of the height, so I just wanted to confirm if that, if, if that's also in front of us tonight.
It is.
Yes, the, the items that are contained in the planning memo are in front of us, and we need to take action on those.
So what happens when the, the, normally the process is that you grant the approval, and then the retaining wall is built, but in this case, it seems like it's backwards, the retaining wall is built.
First of all, we haven't approved anything.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so there, there are two scenarios here. We can deny the application, in which case this becomes purely a building department issue, because we have no enforcement authority. If we approve the application, in my view, we could put conditions on dealing with a variety of issues that have been raised with the retaining wall, because the retaining wall is part of the application that is before us. But I think, let's not, let's, let's see where we are on approving or not approving the application, and if we're heading towards approval, we can then discuss our concerns with the retaining wall, cuz that then is part of what is before us. I mean, our, well, there are a variety of things we could do if we're inclined to approve the application, and, but, let's see if we're there, and then we, if we, we are, we can discuss that. Will the start discussion with Mr. Church?
Am I on?
You are.
Okay. Pursuant to what's before us, a application to permit front yard parking, where front yard parking already exists, just to, just to establish additional front yard parking, I am against this application, and I would deny it as presented.
Mr. McCollough?
I, I, I'm not in favor of this application, cuz I have trouble hearing you. Okay, I'm sorry, you need, you need one. I'm not in favor of this application, because, you know, I, I don't, I don't see why we should approve a third parking space for this property. I think, I think the design allows for two vehicles, currently, as I understand it, one is really in use, and I, I don't believe that it is appropriate to have a combination of three vehicles.
Ms. Harris?
I'm also not in favor of this application, I don't think I've heard a compelling reason why we would permit another parking space here. And, and that's why I am not in favor.
Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm also not in favor of this application, thank you.
And Mr. Fleischer?
I'm not in favor of the application.
Mr. Moore?
I'm not in favor of the application.
Also not in favor of the application, I think, you know, there, there, you know, this part prior, law prior to my time granted a variance that allowed limited front yard parking, their ability to park two cars, there's really been no justification granted for, in terms of land use issues, for creating a space to create for a third car, I think, you know, it, it is unfortunate that they proceeded to build the retaining wall without approv, approvals. I think, you know, comparing the before and after photos in A1 and A2, you know, I mean, this, you know, really is a detriment to the neighborhood what was built. You know, I think if this had come to us, you know, as Mr. Trembleak indicated, this board has not been in favor of front yard parking, and particularly in a situation where a prior variance was already granted, I really hard pressed to think of a situation where we justify expanding that. You know, I think it's, it's a substantial impairment of the zone plan to create, you know, what is a significant parking area in the front yard, as is proposed here. You know, they have conceded, they cannot effectively screen it in order to preserve visibility from the street, so, you know, and I will reiterate what other board members and the neighbors have said, that I'm hoping that the building department will look at what was already built, and see if it was built in a safe function, and that measures are taken so, to ensure that what was built did not increase stormwater runoff from the property onto the neighboring properties. Someone like to make a motion?
Motion to deny the application.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Okay.
Thank you, everyone, and good night.
Good night.
Okay, the next application, that is of James Granillo for property at 521 Upper Mountain Avenue, this is an application for a variance to construct in addition to the house, the property is in the R11 Family Residential Zone, is designated on the Township Tax Maps as Lot 30 of Block 803. A variance is requested from Montclair Code Section 347-45C1 to permit side yard setbacks of less than required, and a variance is requested from Montclair Code Section 347-45C4 to permit a principal structure that is more than 65% of the width of the lot. Are taxes paid, and is the notice in order?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and is Mr. Corneo, here, present, a panelist?
I made him a panelist, Mr. Corneo, yes, you have your microphone on. Well, you have it muted, there, we should be able to hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Corneo, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address, please.
James Corneo, my address is 521 Upper Mountain Avenue, Montclair, New Jersey.
Okay, Mr. Corneo, you can proceed.
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you for, for fitting me in, I know it's been a late night, so I, I really appreciate your time. I'm, I moved into Montclair in 2015, purchased the home, the home originally was, before we purchased it, was originally built as a ranch, a one-story ranch, and in 2002, it was built as a two-story plus attic house. The existing property is non-conforming, the lot is 50 yards wide, and the side yards were not conforming then, and when they did the extend, the vertical extension, they got a variance to build up. And now, that we've lived there for a few years, we see the need to, to enlarge the first floor. But we, I just wanna emphasize that we're not doing anything to the front of the house. So if you can put on the second slide, please. So this, on the left, is, is the street facing portion of it, and we're extending, we're continuing the footprint of the house. The existing first floor is 1,000 square feet, actually 1,058 square feet, and we're proposing to extend 614 square feet towards rear. We, we, we also know that we can build much larger, we, we have dash line, the as of rights, but our intention was to enlarge the living room and not create another space. If you go on to the third slide, please. We're only extending the first floor, and one of the things that we do notice is our neighbors, their houses are almost the same, they, they. their houses are almost the same, uh, they, they, they go as far as my house. So the further we go out, the more we, uh, impede on the view for the neighbors. So we want to, we want to avoid going out too far. And we have a very large backyard. Uh, but, but also, you know, we don't, we don't want to, uh, put too much of an impact uh, on our neighbors because we do, we do appreciate them looking, um, north and south on their properties. Um, also part of the project is we're, we're gonna put a, uh, unenclosed deck. And, uh, if you go to the next slide, uh, this shows you the zoning calculations. The, what is shaded in green or blue, uh, shows you the portions that we're requesting a variance on. Um, our side yards on both the, the north and south are non-conforming. And the recent zoning resolution, uh, also creates a third non-conforming, uh, portion of it, which we're, we're now sixty-two percent of our fifty-foot lots. So, um, that, that's, that's the gist of it, uh, I, if you, if you'd like, I can show you the floor plan that we're proposing for the first floor, which would be slide, uh, slide number, uh, slide number seven. So this is the proposed floor plan. As you can see, our intention is to enlarge the room and not create another room. Uh, which, which if we set back, it, it would, it would kind of have a, the feeling of another room. We really needed to, uh, increase the living room. And also where we say new pantry, that used to be the kitchen, but it's always been too small for us. So we're proposing to move the kitchen towards the rear. And, um, and open up the living room into the deck. All right. If you're, so we can review the other slides if you'd like.
No, let, let's see if we, you know, if the board members have questions, they need to refer to those. Mr. Fleischer, do you have any questions?
I, I, I have a couple of questions. I mean, it's not unusual for us if someone adds a second story to allow it to line up with the size. Um, and if you were carrying through the essence of what I would call the basic architecture of the house into this new addition, that's one thing, but it, when I look at the elevations, uh, like on your drawing, A10, if we can go to that, Janice? Just go, yeah, I mean, the existing two-story house stands on its own. And it appears that the one-story addition is a one-story addition flat roof. That's fine, I don't have any problem with it stylistically or materials or anything else. But we've often, when there've been additions on to structure, asked that the addition at least meet the side yard requirements. As opposed to again adding more, it's not as if, it's not as if what's being added is, is part of the motif of the, of the house and, and following the style of the house, that it has to be all lined up with it. So I would ask, the most basic question is, is there any reason why, even if it has to get a little bit deeper, um, further into the, into what we'll call the rear yard, why the addition couldn't be somewhat narrower and meet the, uh, the side yard requirements? Um, even if it's still over the, even if it's still over the sixty-five percent, it at least meets the side yard requirements of the zone?
Um, the, the big reason is because when we open up the living room, as the floor plan shows, it would, it would aesthetically create another space. So that's slide seven. So if, if I did, if I did set it back the three feet that's required on, on the north side, sorry, the south side, which is on the bottom, uh, it, it would create a little bit, but aesthetically, uh, I am having, uh, you know, as the, as the architect and the person living here, I am having that, uh, second thought of maybe, maybe redesigning it so it would be, uh, more i- i- in the aesthetics of the original house. You know, so, um, if, if, if that would help, uh, get the enlargement approved as shown on the floor plan, um, I have no problem redesigning it to, to go and, and, and be more in the harmony with the original design.
I'm looking, I'm, I'm looking at the side plan, um, which is your drawing, A2.
Yes.
And, and, and I under- and I understand the sense of the continuity of the living. And so then the question sort of flips itself a little bit. If you can maintain, if you can, from my perspective, I could live with the five foot one as opposed to six foot, which is one of the normal side yard requirements. If the other side could be pulled in, which has actually nothing to do with the impact on the living room extension, because that other side is a kitchen. And I'd rather see the, the space get a little deeper and at least get one of the side yards back into conforming with it. I would think architecturally, and I'm an architect as well, I would think architecturally, you might even still want a slight break in plane, I'll call it, between the existing structure with its gable roof and the new structure with its flat roof, even if that existing break in plane was three or four inches. Um, with six inches or something that at least separates the addition from the plane of the, this two-story, uh, house with the gable roof that's existed for a while now. So, you know, if I had to live with the five foot one, not a problem, I could deal with it. I think architecturally, you'd be better off separating the planks a bit and making a break in plane at least. But you've done it with materials, so I could deal with that. If the opposite side was brought into compliance, even if it meant the whole space had to get a little bit deeper to accommodate a larger kitchen. And you'd end up with a larger living room, dining room, or whatever you want to call it on top of that. I'd like to see it come more into compliance as opposed to holding both, um, both yards, um, the way they are, so that, that's, that's my question and my comment.
Should I respond to that?
Yes, please.
Oh, so, um, obviously, uh, I agree with you on, on breaking the volumes up a little bit, especially in, in, in these types of homes. Uh, obviously, that can be done by setting back, or that could be done with maybe, uh, putting some columns. Or there, there's a way of, there's a way of breaking it up architecturally to still create, uh, a separate volume. So, so I, I agree with you. Um, I mean, we, we would be losing one foot, because I think, I think on this side, ten feet is required, so we would be losing maybe, maybe, uh, fifteen, sixteen inches. So I don't, I don't think that's a problem for, for us in terms of, uh, um, so, I mean, if, if that would, if that would, uh, create an approval, then again, I, I, I'm flexible to that because, uh, because it is the kitchen. So the kitchen, we, we can, it does, the continuity of the living room is not as important over there. So I, I, I can agree with you.
So, oh, I was suggesting if you needed more space in the kitchen, i- i- and you gained the place in what you call the dining room too, you could pull, you could pull it a little bit further into the rear yard.
Right.
But, but hold the ten foot maybe on that, on that, um, far side next to that adjacent property there. That's just a suggestion, I don't know how anybody else feels about it. But given the difference in architecture and everything else, I think some plain difference would benefit the design and you won't have to lose any space either, okay? That's the only comment there.
Mr. Moore, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Church?
No questions, no questions.
Okay, Mr. McCollough?
There are questions about the roof, uh, is, is that, is that in fact a, a flat roof? Or does it have a pitch to it?
The, the, it, it's really, wha- what you see on the rendering is a parapet, so we will have a pitch to the roof. Um, how much the pitch is, I mean, I, I want to have as much of a pitch as possible, uh, especially with the amount of rain we've been getting. So, um, if, if you look at, uh, yeah, I, I mean, I don't know if you see, but there's a little bit of a hatch, uh, that, that, yeah, that hatch right there. So it does show that there is a, a, a pitch, um, but, but it will be hidden, so from, from the, from this, from the rear yard, you'll see a parapet.
Yeah, because, you know, it just seems, you know, you have the potential of a lot of water coming from the, from the roof of the main structure that currently exists. Um, and, or, and snow also.
But right, right now, right now, we have, right now, we have a, a, a drain along the whole perimeter.
A gutter.
And it's not designed for water to run into the, in, right, right now, there's a deck there, so when you're sitting in the deck, the water's not gushing down there. It goes through the meters on both sides. Thank you.
Um, Ms. Harris?
Um, I actually want to reiterate, reiterate, uh, Mr. Fleischer's first comment. Um, I think the project would be better served if you actually maintain the setbacks on this addition, especially given, um, the drastically different architectural style that you have shown here. Um, I mean, I'm trying to figure out how you're gonna detail, um, you know, where your, your new, um, where this gray, I don't know what these panels are, where it meets the existing house. And I can just see that that can get really messy really quickly. Um, I think that you'll do yourself a lot, a lot of favors if you would follow the setback and just go a little bit further into the yard. Um, and, you know, in terms of the spaces in, inside, you know, I think you can still, um, even the way you have it shown here, I don't know how it would be a continuation of the rooms because it looks like the addition, the ceiling height in the addition is going to be higher than the ceiling height in the existing house. So how that is one, you know, continuation of the existing living room is a little unclear to me. Um, but I think you should really maybe consider, um, uh, adhering to the, the side yard setbacks and just going a little bit further into the yard. I mean, have you thought about that detail, um, where this frame is going to meet?
I did, I did. I actually work with metal panels, uh, very often, so I, I, I do have details that I can work on. But, um, thi- this, this particular architecture, I, I'm sure you've seen, is, is, is getting more and more prevalent in, 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 in Montclair, if you, if you just drive down some of the street. But, uh, the existing, uh, facade right now is vinyl and we're planning on changing the entire site of both buildings. So, um, so it, it would be part of the project that we would change all the, all the site.
True, and what would you change that to?
We, we're thinking of har- hardy board, you know, uh, hardy planks, which is, uh, you know, we, we can have any kind of aesthetics that we want, you know, in terms of the product. But, uh, we, uh, if you look at the, you look at the rendering, we, we, we kind of still want to keep the, the look of the fronts, you know, we, we love the, that, that's what attracted us to going to Montclair. The, the traditional part of it at the street side. At, at the rear, because it's not really facing the street, you know, we, we kind of, I kind of, as an architect, I kind of wanted to do some of the difference. Um, but that's just an aesthetic choice, I mean, in terms, in terms of zoning, uh, I can, I can work backwards, i- i- if, if the board thinks that I should keep the traditional style of the house, I have no problem.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that at all, I, I, I like the addition, I like the materials, or at least the way it's rendered. Um, I'm not saying that you need to change that, I'm just saying that it's so different. Um, the ceiling heights are different, um, that you can afford to maintain the, the side yard setbacks um, and not lose any of, of the design that you have here. Um, and just go a little bit further into the yard, so that we're just issuing one variance as opposed to two or three.
Right, but in, but in terms of like, again, this is, in terms of, I, I'm thinking of the, the usage, usage of it, in terms of furniture and stuff, then I really, I really wanted one wall. Because I also, you know, we also, um, you know, I like artwork on my walls and stuff, so I kind of wanted a nice show balls. It's, I kind of wanted a kind of an art, little art gallery that I do have guests over to have a wall that I can really, uh, showcase work. That's why I don't have, I'm trying to avoid windows also, because on that wall, I want to put some more artwork.
Okay, thank you.
On the, on, on the kitchen, on the other side, I don't mind setting it, I mean, I don't have a problem setting it back because it, it will, it will work with the kitchen cabinets. On, on this wall, it, it'll, um, it might impede some of the, the things that I wanted to do there.
Mr. Caulfield, any questions?
Uh, no questions at this time.
Mr. Vera, do you have any questions?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, a question for Mr. Cornejo. Um, with the proposed addition, uh, with the flat roof, are you concerned, have you considered snow drift? Because now you have two different, um, elevations or two different structures and with wind pushing against the wall, um, the snow drift might cover your windows, the existing windows that are air-hackened.
Yes, it, it is a concern. Um, I mean, when, when I start detailing it, I mean, we're, we're, I'm, I'm planning on using metal, a metal roof, maybe standing seam, um, you know, which is, which is very, uh, incurious to, to, to snow. Um, I have to detail it, yeah, I have to, I have to detail it, but yes, definitely, uh, um, we have had three feet of snow, um, you know, i- i- if it really becomes an issue, I can, I can always keep the roof, you know, I can, I can provide some, some kind of way to mitigate, you know, not only the, 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 the height of the roof, but also the load of it. And so I can definitely come up with other solutions.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, I don't have any questions, um. Do you have anything further you want to add? Well, okay, are there any members of the public who have any comments, questions, statements? Anything you want to say? Um, Janice, I guess I probably have a couple of people left, but do you want to move them into, as panelists, and see if they have any comments?
Oh, can you hear me?
Yeah. I did, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Is this Mr. Hand?
That's correct.
Would you raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address, please.
Anthony Hand, 525 Upper Mountain Avenue.
Okay, Mr. Hand, if you have a question or a comment, now is the time.
Yes, um, I'm the resident on the adjacent property to the north side, uh, that, uh, that, that one of the variances being requen- well, the variances are being requested in respect of. And I want to object to the, the variation, um, being requested. Well, we've been residents in the house since 2000. We were there when the previous variation was granted for the additional story built on the property and didn't object at that time, since it was a reasonable request. But there's no reason why a previous, um, request for a variance should be a reason to have an additional request for a variance from current compliance. And, uh, again, it's, it's, forget the stylistic and all the rest of things, but that variance impacts our sidelines, impacts our views, impacts the, uh, existing codes. And another concern obviously for the future is the statement that was weighed by one of the members once a variance is- Once a variance is permitted for a, a standard one-story, getting the second floor addition, second floor addition is usually granted without question. So that adds an additional concern for the future.
Are there any other members of the public who have questions or statements concerning the application? Ms. Lepak, do you have anything? One last chance if there are any members of the public who have any comments or questions or testimony on the application. This is your chance to say it. And Mr. Corneo, do you have, uh, anything further you wish to say before we discuss and vote on the application?
Um, well, a- as, as, uh, as I said before, our intention was not to go as far as we could because the as of rights allows us to go much further into the backyard. So as of right, um, you know, we, we know that in terms of floor area, we, we can do a much larger addition. Uh, my intention really was just to keep the living room larger. And we have, I have no problem recessing the kitchen to meet the, the setback requirement.
Uh, we'll start discussion with Mr. McCullough.
I'm, I'm generally, uh,
Ms. Harris?
Um, I'm not in favor of the side yard setback, um, variance, um, for either setback. Um, I would be open to, um, the lot area, um, variance.
Mr. Caulfield?
Um, I'm in favor.
Uh, Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'm with Ms. Harris. I will not be in favor. Uh, but I'm open to, um, consider, um, bringing the, the side yard setback to compliance.
Mr. Fleischer?
Um, I think I've sort of stated the case. Um, the side yard setbacks, uh, still require the width variance. Um, and, um, I would simply say that I believe you can get the continuity you're looking for without either of the side yard variances. You've already got, as Ms. Harris said, the change in ceiling height, which you can have to overcome under any circumstances. Of course, there's a transition zone and you might, you might want to emphasize the fact that it's the transition zone, even if the space flows through. So, um, with, with two of the other board members seeking to maintain the side lot lines, um, I think I could approve this with, with the, uh, maintaining the side lot line. And I would know, I would have no objection if as a result of that, you wanted to go back a few more feet in the depth. Um, a- and I, and I, I know you can make the transition without, without having to sense suddenly the continuity of the living room has been lost. So I, I would, I, I agree, uh, Mr. Viera and Ms. Harris, that maybe we should just hold the side lot lines to those that are called for and allow, if necessary, an extension, um, further to the rear yard of, of a couple of feet to do that.
Mr. Moore?
I'm generally in favor of the application, but think that there should be some restrictions. And, uh, I'll let the board kind of, uh, bring up what some of those restrictions may be.
Mr. Church?
Uh, I would be, I'm, I'm in favor of the application with some modification to the side yard setback situation. I would be interested in hearing any modifications that we could add to an approval.
Okay, um, the, I'm going to be less than helpful here. The, you know, clearly, uh, even if this was fully conforming with both side yards, they would still need a, a building width variance that would exceed the 65% requirement. So that variance, um, you know, unless we're going to require greater than the side yard setbacks, which I don't think would be appropriate here. Um, previously, we, we've approved a, um, variance to change this from a one-story to a two-story. Um, you know, driving by, you know, the, the then owner did a tremendous job doing that. Um, the house really fits in. Um, the question, you know, I have raised this on other applications is how far do we go with, you know, it's just going back and keeping the same setback, non-conforming setbacks as the existing house. We've done additions to the rear. We've done second story on top of first stories allowing that. But at some point, um, the addition gets, the, it's too big. And, you know, this, this is a lot that is very deep and gives a lot of room for, uh, ability to expand in a conforming sense to the rear. Um, so, you know, I, I absolutely agree in terms of the northerly, um, side yard setback, um, that, that should conform to the 10 feet. Um, I have mixed feelings with southerly side yard setback just because they're talking about less than a foot. We're talking about, you know, 10 and a half inches approximately and what, um, practical difference that makes. But I'll be guided by the other board members. As I said, I'd be a favor of granting the, width of the building. We quite, you know, granting waiver from 65% based on whatever setbacks we agree on. Um, so we could either discuss it further or someone can make a motion and and vote on it. Okay. I want to go to bed. I'd say I want to go home because I'm there, but someone needs to make a motion or discuss further.
A motion to deny, um, the side yard setback variance.
Is that one or both of them?
Both of them, sorry. The side yard setback variances, both of them.
Grant the lot width variance, building width rather?
Um, yes, but we would have to condition that. Um, I don't know, Joe, if you can give some guidance on.
Well, I, I, I think, I think we, we are in a situation where the issue of lot width variance, which was essentially related to McMansions, and this is hardly a McMansion. Um, so I, I have, I don't have a problem with the, with the width variance. I, I think the question in my mind is simply whether or not, um, a- and I, and I heard at least two of the board members suggest that we should not grant the side yard variances. And I think the applicant slash architect slash owner can figure out how to make that transition, even if he loses the 10 inches, uh, some of the five one goes up to six foot. And what I was suggesting is, and only now can, can answer that question, is does he need two or three feet deeper to still get the kitchen he wants? In which case, that's not going to be a big impact. In which case, we can establish that as, and she'll extend no further north than three feet or four feet from what's presented. That's the way I, you know, that's the kind of condition I would, I would set. I, I would agree to deny the side yard variances, but allow, uh, a further extension of, of no more than five feet. And I think he'd be, he'd come out ahead of the game.
Let, let, let me, let me do what I hope is math if my phone is doing this correctly. I mean, one way to do that is, he's currently showing, um, from one side, 148 feet to the rear yard and the other 150 feet because the line's at a slight angle because the railroad right of ways at a slight angle. If we said, um, I actually want to give him more room on the kitchen side for this, I think, a greater, that the one-story addition, I mean, how, you know, I would do 140, no closer than 143 feet, which would give him five additional feet, um, to work with. Um, and then the other thing, we need to specify the extent we're granting of the, um, building width. And if you, if both, both side yards are conforming, if my phone isn't lying to me, we should do not to exceed 68% of the lot width.
That would be, that would be fine from my perspective. Both of those, both of those conditions, which would be fine. And I think the applicant will be able to do a very nice addition under those conditions.
I think so.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion? I think to expand upon Angela's.
Conditions, are those the conditions you stated, Mr., Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Okay. Move approve of the application with the conditions suspended by the chair.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. And thank you for sticking up.
Don't thank them yet.
Second to the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, um, but Janice, why don't you call the roll just because we were not all in the same place initially?
Okay, uh, Mr. Church?
Yes.
Mr. Fleischer?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Caulfield?
Yes.
And Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, before some, Janice, can you tell Joe and I how badly back we are tomorrow so we can start figuring out how we're going to deal with this?
You mean, how, how much, what are pending, pending, what pending applications do we have? In? All right, we have, uh,
Tomorrow, tomorrow. We don't need to do it tonight.
All right, good, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All the favor. Bye.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.